Okay. Okay, call this meeting to order at 6:36 PM. We always begin with public input if anybody has anything they'd like to address. Okay, moving on, student report. We have Sophia Saldana here, class of 2026 for the student report. Welcome.
Hi. So for notable academic matters, we do have the NHS ceremony next week on Wednesday, and we have a practice run-through the day before on Tuesday. We had the AP World History Field Trip today. We went to the PB Essex Museum and we split up, we have two classes. We split up into our classes and we visited the Asian history, maritime, that kind of stuff. AP exams start next week, starting on Monday, and Student Recognition Night is on May 14th. For Fine Arts, Chorus is competing this Friday. Notorious have their big ICH SA finals in New York City, and they won an award for Best Arrangement last weekend, and then also the Sondheim Awards for the Mean Girls earlier this year. And we have a bunch of games this week. There's a track meet tomorrow, a softball game today at Newburyport, a girls' tennis match today at Amesbury, a boys' lacrosse tip, a boys' lacrosse game today at Essex Tech, and a girls' lacrosse game today at home. And then Student Council's hosting their annual Kids Night Out this Friday for, that's our big fundraiser, and we're also hosting student leadership and mentoring interviews starting this week. And then for my student work report, I have a big project. I'm not sure if this is what they showed you last time, but I know it wasn't finished. So this is my finished one. We did a synthesis essay project where I was creating my own prompt for the AP exam, and I chose "Is Our Society Too Materialistic?" And kind of materialism, but also a conversation of like kids growing up too fast and how we're seeing products being marketed towards kids more and more. So it's like a huge document with, these are just some of my images, and then also some documents and articles. Some of them, like this is like a research article that was done, and most of them are kind of from colleges. And then along with that, I also have an annotated bibliography that I did on all of the sources. It was seven sources, I believe.
Excellent. Comments, questions?
What was your conclusion?
So when I wrote my article, I decided that we are too materialistic when I wrote my final draft. And I focused it more on that. I liked kind of the topic. I did it on like Sephora Kids was one of my paragraphs, which is like a big topic recently. And I used some pictures in just, I think it's like another look at the materialism. It's not just like American consumerism, but also like our society as a whole.
Sorry to laugh, it's just my daughter calls.
I was about to say. Have you been following my daughter around? So what are your interests outside of, you know, doing this report?
I do a lot of student council work, but aside from that, we just got back from vacation. I'm gonna be honest, I did almost nothing.
Good for you.
I'm getting ready for AP exam, so I'm just gonna start kind of cramming everything in. And I just hung out with my parents all week. My mom has an at-home daycare here in North Freding, so she also had the week off. So we just kind of spring cleaned and just got ready for the rest of the school year.
What AP exam are you taking?
Bio, World, and AP Ling.
So you're pretty bored. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I did, I, I, I have one addition and then one question. So the addition, I did watch the Sondheim Awards and they, the Mean Girls is nominated for many awards, including Best Musical again, Best Actor, a few supporting actors and actresses. So congrats to Masters for that. The, we're talking about AP, just random question. Like a couple of years ago, we passed something that limited how many AP courses somebody, a student could take. And I'm just curious what your thoughts as a student rep are as to like, what's a, what's a fair load? Like you say, you're, you're taking three APs right now.
Yeah.
Do you think that's pretty up to full schedule? And like, how many are you planning on taking as a, as a senior?
I haven't really decided next year between three or four. I do think it's important to have a limit on it. I think in our school, it's really academically competitive, and I don't think it's anything you guys do here. And I often like, we're talking about teachers and we're talking about picking out our classes, and teachers are kind of telling you, take a break, don't load yourself up. I think it's just a culture that we've created in the school, kind of ourselves. So I think it's really important. And I think that a lot of people would probably overload themselves. I think five APs in senior, that's already crazy, in my opinion. So I think people would go even further if that limit wasn't already there.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay in line, but you can also head out and get your work done, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sophia. Okay, for new business, we will start with the Turner, Jay Turner Hood School presentation. So Dr. McKay, you're gonna be our MC tonight?
Yeah, MC is probably a little stretch, but yeah. How's that?
There we go.
I had this set up, but that's really the idea. It's not way beyond my technical capacity.
You gave Mr. Quinlan the night off? Geez, he usually comes to this one. Why not?
Welcome everyone to our, we just published a showcase. So tonight we're just going to show you some of the things that we're working on here at the Hood School. We've had some first grade friends, we've invited some student council friends, and then our chorus is going to sing the night away for you. So I'm Glenn McKay, and Principal here at Hood School, so welcome. Seeing mostly familiar faces, so feel free to ask any questions at the end or, you know, reach out after. So tonight, the agenda I already kind of outlined. Just a little introduction, whether it's that of the Hood School Student Council. Talk about how it's great to be a Hound Dog, and do a little school spirit review of the summary that we completed. Dip our toes into cultural responsive teaching and some of the things that we're working on here. And then, like I said, our chorus is going to take us away from the evening. As you know, here at Hood School, our theme is hand in hand together. We can, we believe that if we all work together, through the grades, through council, teachers, parents, students, we can achieve any goal that we set our minds to here. I think we've been pretty successful with many of the endeavors we've taken recently, so I'm proud to say that. And I'm just thankful for every that you do for all of us administrations, et cetera, for all of your support because we're, we're successful because of the group act that we have working together. I think it's important to also recognize that the school, we suffered a loss this year. As you know, Mrs. Roden passed. Fourth grade teacher beloved, she had 15 years in the Northern Public Schools, all of which were the Hood School. She was the leader of our Happy Hound Dogs. She was the data leader. She was my principal designee for upwards of nine years. And she created our men and women room. I wish a little bit tonight to have this space too, because this was one of the spaces that she really enjoyed coming to. You recognize this, this Justina's Book Garden over there. That's to her, that's a little memorial to her niece. And she would come in here when, you know, times were tough for her during her treatment, et cetera. And I was told that butterflies were really common to her. So particularly those ones over by the window, if the blowers kick on, sometimes the butterfly kind of raised, that really put her at ease. So, you know, we just, I think it's a lot, the community that we talk with, we have a lot of support from everyone, administrations, we're getting parents, staff. But it'd be important to just recognize that we did suffer a pretty major loss here from the school this year. And, you know, we're doing as well as can be expected because of the school. So thank you. Our student council, you ready? Hola. Say it again?
Yeah.
Just coming, you want me to go against the slide? Play video. Go to top.
Founded in 1879, Lazarus House is a foundation that aims to help people in need by collecting donations of food, clothing, and other utilities.
Hola, my name is Zepherina. I have two children who are living at Lazarus House Shelter. When I came to Lazarus House, I was homeless and I was worried about how I was going to provide for my children myself. I did not have a job and I did not speak English very well. Where could I go and what would I want to do?
Every day, individuals and families in our community face poverty, hunger, homelessness. Today, we're gonna get an inside look at Lazarus House Ministries and the incredible services they provide to those like Zerapena and others in the community. I'm so excited for you, the department. She's the executive director. It's gonna be giving us a tour today. Let's head inside.
So let me talk to you about what we do here. So we have two housing programs, two food programs, a thrift store, and right now, we are in our community resources space. We have, what we say like a mini CBS where folks sit down and get toothbrush, toothpaste, you know, hair products, shampoo, conditioner, everything that you can think about once a month. Seeing about 150 folks coming in daily to eat. They could come in to have breakfast or come in to have lunch. So that's why we're seeing 150 folks every day.
So notice this is a really busy spot. There's a constant stream of people coming in.
Oh, yes. It doesn't matter the temperature, it doesn't matter, you know, the weather. Folks continue to come because the need is so great. We're seeing 1,800 plus guests coming in every Wednesday. We're open from 9:00 to 2:00. But the lines start pouring out of 6:00 AM morning.
I mean, it's the sights, it's the smells that you can feel. This is more than just a place to eat and wear. It's a place where a community can come together.
Definitely. And you can feel the love, and that happens with our staff in here. Like not only is it amazing food, but they pour in their hearts into everything that they do here.
I think if you minimize the audio of the box.
Minimize it?
No, um, go down to the box, maybe the bottom part more. Everything is small.
Frozen.
It's clear.
Sorry, I don't think I can also.
Oh, no. Rachel, I'm a chief.
Thank you.
Hand in hand.
Thank you. Yeah, hit slideshow. Don't leave, because there's another video of Maggie.
All right. The high school student council helped us collect this outstanding amount of collections for the people in need. We collected a total amount of 180 bags, and we had six boxes of air supply left over.
We put a certain amount of supplies in each bag. All of the grades helped us achieve this goal. Payback brought gum and mints. First grade brought tissues and hand sanitizer. Second grade brought baby wipes and yogurt. Third grade brought toothbrushes and toothpaste. Fourth grade brought shampoo and conditioner. And fifth grade brought snacks.
Each member of the student council had to make a speech that we would say out to a loudspeaker to remind all of like the students of the upcoming, um, fundraiser, somebody like donate. We also put up signs around the school so as students were walking through the halls, they could, um, they could, or read it. And then we organized a journal day, which basically, this would get like all the students excited for the upcoming fundraiser, so we would like donate, sign it.
So, uh, this is the Lazarus House. The Lazarus, the Lazarus House is... So when we went around, oh my gosh. So this is how we gather bags. We, we all met into the music room, and we ran around in a circle, in a circle, collecting toothpaste, toothbrushes, conditioner, shampoo, hand warmers, and a lot of snacks. And we put all of those into a bag. As you can see in this picture, we have a lot of bags stuffed into, there's, you can't really see, but there's a second car behind, and that has even more bags.
Hi, I'm a full volunteer speaker and I'm from the high school. Hi, I'm from the school. For the past four years, my high school career has been traditional where the student council was a part of this. This is the best initiative we've ever made since I was born. I have heard of this, but I don't know if it's true. I was still a little high school student, so I also wanted to return back to the degree I have. My time as a student student comes early, sharing my young time. If it's great, if you remember that this student council, wishing my desire to evolve. The setting involved, I meant all the potential and history capital, where it's worthy of this, give advice to communities and organizations to support. Partnership of the Hood School, we team up to collect donations of care items for the Lazarus House, a local one, the shelter. Since our first year, we have been making a difference for the world and the amounts of bags we load, with the stairs surpassing 100,000 bags. These bags were both for pets, loved, and lost people, snacks, and self-reliance. We are grateful for giving such large donations to the Lazarus House and what we do to improve. So the nations from the community was a part of it, because it's where we had the little high school student council, the student council is all part of it. We take those, we're very proud of it.
So, yeah, if you watched student council, well done. Just a special recognition, this is clearly not only for saving money. Also for her, Mr. Sherry, the efforts of his students have been amazing, over the years, but particularly this year. They're very busy in the school. I know a lot of student voice, a lot of suggestions for them. So it's just, it's a great little activity that we have since I arrived here. And I love that we've stretched out recently inside to work with the high school. I think that shows that there's a leadership capacity that they can model, and it's just been wonderful. Thank you both for having us with our amazing students.
We can get sunglasses for the guests.
No, it's okay, it's nice.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Colvin, and this is what I did. So one of the internal things that we do here at the Hood School, we work really hard on internal, like special learning communities, study groups. Basically, groups of students that work together collaboratively to, I mean, groups of teachers that work together collaboratively to improve an aspect of the Hood School, or focus on an initiative, or help us develop a capacity in some area. This year, we have two different groups that ended up being combined. So Mrs. Colvin and Mrs. Roden, we have one of those groups. So I'll let them talk a little bit about two of the things that we're working on. Great to be a Hound Dog and cultural responsive teaching.
So one of our goals was to increase student voice and to find out how kids felt connected to the Hood School. Culturally responsive means that we want to know what the kids enjoy and that they all have a voice. And we had many responses. And you can see, obviously, field trips were very popular. I'm not sure why Google doesn't move my order, but the kids really enjoy when they are able to do activities with their families. Those are really the most popular.
And they range from memories from kindergarten experiences all the way through fifth grade. So it's fun to go down memory lane and, and everything. So the top five, it seems, were, like you said, the field trips, the book fair, Fun Run, Boobash, and Murphy. I mean, invite some first-
Murphy's the dog.
Murphy, excuse me, yeah. Dr. McKay's there, so. I'd like to invite some first grade friends out to come read their parts. So come on up, if you're field tripping.
They should be interested that all of these activities have kind of run a course involved.
Patrick, you're up first.
Can I introduce you, or do you want to say your name?
You can come forward.
Yeah, we'd love to. What would you like to say? Okay, go forward. Right over here.
Hi, everyone, I'm Patrick Blackwell. And I just want to say how much I love our field trips. They're not just about getting on a bus and going somewhere new. They're about learning a whole new way, spreading time with our classmates, and making memories stick with us forever. Whether we're visiting a new place or who we're interested in, it always brings us closer together as a school. Field trips are one of my favorite little traditions, and I hope, and I hope we keep exploring together.
All right, next we have the book fair, which is spread by Molly. Come on up, Molly.
Hi, my name is Molly Madi, and I love books and learn to read with Mrs. Roden. Here at the Hood School, one thing I love at Hood is the book fair. It is a change to walk through the book fair with my friends and find new things to read. There is so much to choose from, and it makes me love learning.
Nice job. Any other star, you're coming up to talk about the Fun Run?
Hi, I'm Charlotte Nellie, and I'm here to talk about the Fun Run. I look forward to it every year, not just because we get to run around and cheer on each other, but because it shows how much spirit and teamwork we have at Hood. Everyone, everyone's included, whether you run fast, slow, or just come out to support your friends. It's fun, it's active, and it brings us together. That's what makes the Fun Run such a cool tradition.
All right, and then Sally's talking about the Boobash. Come on up, Sally.
Hey, everyone, I'm Sally Shadaco, and the Boobash is one of my absolute favorite events. It's a perfect mix of fun costumes, games, and single-level school dressed up and excited. What I really love is how it makes our school feel like a big family. Kids, teachers, and parents are all coming together to have fun. The Boobash brings out the spooky spirit of the Hood. It's a tradition I hope will never stop, at least for the next four years while I'm here.
That was mad at the end, that was a good question, that's why I'm selling. Come on up, this is Ben, and Ben's gonna talk about Murphy.
Hi, my name is Ben Bowen, and I want to tell you about someone who makes J. K. Moore feel absolutely special. Only one of the amazing silly dog. He's Dr. McKay's dog. And he's certified by TDI. He is the best we love. When he greets us during school visits, comes into your, your classroom. Just, no, all just hangs out watching us at recess. Murphy has a clean happy energy and makes our whole school feel more like our home. Murphy makes your days quite new and helps join us together. He's a big important part of our schoolhood. Have you done a nice job?
Good for you. I can take all the credit for that. So the groups that we merged together were culturally responsive teaching, which has been a new big wave in the district and throughout the state and everywhere. Engaging families just at that younger age, but keeping them engaged throughout their fifth grade experience here. So this is just tying those two ideas together, and that's really following Heidi's lead with this one, but it was really nice that these two groups worked together, bringing schools, families, and the community together.
And they do dovetail together.
Yes, it's very nice.
Because having family engagement definitely lets us under, you know, learn about families and all of their traditions.
And we found this, we found this diagram that we felt kind of was like, explained it perfectly with culturally responsive teaching at the core, but bringing native languages into the classroom, understanding history and culture of not only where we are living, but where our families are from, the community culture, the classroom, and just involving families. We obviously had a huge increase in the class size, so getting to know them a little bit more quickly and getting the numbers and the backgrounds there at an early time in September. But it's just being able to include them and hook them into the interest. So we feel like it gives us a sense of belonging, develops critical thinking for the kids. They're able to self-reflect, build their academic and social emotional skills, see themselves reflected in the curriculum, make those connections while also developing a sense of voice.
So, Mrs. Roden?
Well, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that all the families were involved in was a Hood School cookbook. And we currently have two recipes.
So it's, it's running, it's early.
It's a bit of progress.
Yes.
But we were hoping that families would be able to share their family traditions and traditional meals that they make. I know Dr. McKay shared one of his.
I did, I did an array, she had my traditional family cookbooks.
Delicious.
Yes. So we're hoping to get a wide array of different traditional foods and that families, even if it's just a tradition that your family has. That's our QR food.
So if you want to scan that and bring it up for presentation, feel free to simply join us. Families, and I'll also be-
I will say the two recipes are zucchini bread and carrot cake. So there's a theme of like putting vegetables in food. Not necessary, but those are the two that we received.
Any questions about culturally responsive teaching?
Yes. I'm sorry. So the, the, people can scan that to continue to add? Is there, is there a date that it's gonna be, is it gonna be found, or maybe?
Well, we sometimes, these PLCs that we have, these professional learning, we kind of carry them over in two years, and we feel it still needs more time. So I think this took a lot of people by surprise. Even Heidi's survey was great, but some of the kids were like, not necessarily thinking of their whole school experience and like what brought them to life, just your favorites. So we're trying to work out the kinks, but we feel like this is a good place to start.
I love the cookbook. Keep me posted, I'll, I'll get a copy. It's already. And you can get the idea, Mrs. Wright had done one when she was a third grade teacher, and my son had done one at the little school when he was in fifth grade. And they all, it was like a holiday cookbook, so they all said that they're traditional holiday food. So kind of- Have you thought, excuse me, about making it like a requirement for like every third grader needs to celebrate? And then you'd get a lot.
Oh, that's good, that's good. Bring that back to the group, that's great.
I love it, I love it. And the speakers were fantastic.
Weren't they great?
Future modern.
Future modern.
Lots of bedtime though. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. I still have my kindergarten period.
How did you?
I think you liked yours. I don't think they're first graders.
What did you do?
There's like one friend. I think I have a top grade student, right? Which I'm sure I have nothing to do.
Yes, exactly.
I would like to introduce the Hood School chorus. And Miss Kamel. Hi, Miss Kamel.
Good evening. Thank you, my friends.
Right up here. Also here. We have props. So our chorus is all fourth and fifth graders who have selected in and chosen to be here. And these are the kids who actually came in on the Monday after vacation, which is a tough day to come back on and do a show. And these kids went and made the extra effort to come here and be here to perform for you guys. And we practiced a few times over in the music room and they're really excited to show you one of their favorite songs. They voted on doing this song and we actually have the two soloists here to do their part tonight. So we are going to perform for you "Hamburger with an Order of Flies." When I opened my music, flies started diving, as many flights as I've page twenty-five. As long as they buzz, I stay perfectly still, then slam the shuttles and shake them off. You got into it, that's good. So now I'm a hero since I caught all those pesky flies. But that's how I did it, I just opened my book and replied. Cashew flies are the most not that tricky, but why do those pages get sticky? Oh, hey, don't order a hamburger, 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 hamburger.
That was my favorite one.
It's such a fun one.
This year, so thank you.
Great job, guys.
I think that was amazing. Thank you so much.
Except for the blind book.
I'm gonna tell you, I think that added to it.
It was great. Thank you, guys. All right, thank you, guys, for having us.
Excellent job, excellent guys.
Thank you, Dr. McKay.
I believe that brings us to unfold for our portion of this evening. Are there any questions that I can answer? I didn't bring the dog for you.
I was, I was looking for the dog.
I'm pretty embarrassed to mention this.
I was just gonna say, is it now a new policy that all elementary principals, at least newly hired ones, are gonna have to have a dog?
I think it actually brings a common-
Strongly encouraged, right?
-effect to the school. It's an interesting kind of thing to see unfold. Yeah, I highly recommend it.
I should support you on it.
I did hear one of the kids say that Murphy watches them play. I found that hard to believe he doesn't actually get involved.
So during the TDI test, like so that's D-Sertified Therapy Dogs International, one of the test items, you have to walk you through all these different scenarios. One of them is if children are playing and he cannot react. He is, it's, yeah, it's took a long time to train him for that one.
PhD level.
It's, you know, if you're going to back out and play with a volatile problem, when he's out there, he's kind of just, it's interesting. It's almost like he knows his environment.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess, I'll ask one question off, off the agenda a little bit, but since you're here, we're voting the budget in a few minutes. I'm just curious from the principal perspective, if you can comment at all about cuts that happened from last year, things that are proposed for next year, anything, just because we're trying to get information out to the public about the impact of some of these things. And so I'm just curious from your perspective, what have you seen at the Hood School?
So I think over the eighteen or so years that I've been with Mr. McKay, Mrs. Molly, Mr. Maloney, all those discussions, maybe we should always add around class size. So we've always talked about our first priority is maintaining class size. And I think these cuts, these cuts can really impact that, particularly the other two schools where either we're hoping to cut, I mean to add more staff here and get more equity across. They're going to experience increased class sizes, which will impact student learning behavior. So we're already talking about school adjustment councils increasing this. Everything has a little ramification to it. I would say that the cuts last year, these are things that you don't see initially. You pay for them dearly down the line as an elementary person. So cutting an academic intervention that's at sixteen, seventeen hours and we might not seem impactful, it's significantly impactful because if you talk about tiers of instructions, from tier one, tier two, tier three, and kids with varying level of needs, every time you take out one of those pieces to it, it decreases the interaction that the student has with the teacher directly. And then they come on other pieces such as special education services or behavior. And then you're always chasing it, chasing it for twelve years. Whereas before, we worked on so strongly at the beginning, that the elementary level that a lot of those problems could be mitigated by strong interventions early on. That as they carry out, you'll see more of that unfortunately. I'd say class size, I can't say the other two elementary schools are significantly impactful. And it leads to a whole host of other problems.
And I think one other thing, from the school improvement plan discussion, I think all the elementaries talked about absenteeism growing coming out of COVID. I don't know if you have any numbers tonight, but I'm just curious like how this year is going.
So touching today, absent, we talked about this case, so one of the study groups is chronic absenteeism.
Yeah.
I have eight that have met the threshold to be an eighteen. I have, I can't tell you exactly, I have a bunch teetering. So every twenty days, we do an analysis. So chronic absenteeism is ten percent of students that misses ten percent of the school year. So we do little checkpoints every twenty or so days. We missed the day one forty because we're on day one forty-four now, so we did the one forty check-in today. And we set up a letter, not judging, not saying, hey, just keep this on your radar. There's a trajectory noted, and the trajectory is that your student is progressing towards being chronically absent, identified by the state of Massachusetts. I think that's worked a little bit, but I have a whole group of people sitting there, like that fifteen, they're there, but they haven't hit that eighteen yet. Eight have hit the eighteen. We did discuss today, I haven't shared, so we're not doing it yet. We want to try to figure out the cause of some of those. We have like feelings, the nurse is part of that group, so we know the sick, and all those kind of things. You know, maybe do an anonymous survey to the students that are identified, not judging, just saying, hey, what's the cause of these absences? So is there a way for us to, you know, differently support you to make the school more engaging and all those kind of things? So that's something that we've brainstormed, but we're not totally there yet. But chronic absenteeism, we don't, I believe, all of our programs, we've got four or four here at the Hood School last year. There might have been a three for our, one of our seven groups. So we did well, and to the previous year, we struggled.
Sorry, just to clarify, do you just send a letter? Do you not call them or ask them for a meeting or?
So we ask for meetings.
Okay.
They don't get those.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's hard to force to commit. We open dialogue, but not a lot, which is on that. You know, I have some strong feelings on why some of those went at that eighteen. You know, and I don't know if it's school control or not, I just want some data to quantify what my life restart. It's like I said, the nurse is sitting there with me, so we know who's the medical piece then. What's the other reasons for an absence is, is what we're trying to discern.
I think the only other off-agenda topic I'll bring up is we've, we've been proposing the replacement of the modulars for the modular here at the Hood School and, you know, and a new wing or whatever, a new building project. I'm just curious, can you speak a little bit about the usage of the modular this year and any specific issues you've been having? Or is it going okay? I'm just, just curious because that discussion is happening more.
So the modules are interesting. So I believe I'm eighteen years here and I was told that they had met their life expectancy when I arrived. I've also been told that we've done such a nice job of, and this is not a credit to this, it's a credit to facilities and administration, but we've done a really nice job of maintaining those. So they keep them up and running and all that. They're done. Like you can, they feel it, you can see it. I had said to Dr. Daly earlier on, as we were talking, because the size of the Hood School has gone from, we sit strongly, this is a strange, about three hundred and fifty-six students was our number. Like I'd go, give her a tape, one or two. Then there was that year, I believe those students are currently sitting in second grade, that all summer, first graders were enrolled, and we ballooned up as a school. I believe we're sitting at like four hundred and seventeen now. So our space is full. So we had these brilliant discussions about what to do, where to. I initially wasn't aware of the Hood School, but then if you think about the location, it's great back there. But if you ever spend time, so I've done a few house projects on the side, so I marvel at interesting things. That foundation back there is so significant, it's so nice. It's, it's built well, it's big, it goes along a hill. It would be sad to actually not utilize that space to a degree that it's an opportunity sitting there. So I'd be fully going forward to have March over here at the Hood School. I think this is just the whole questions. I think it's a nice little bit of turnaround down there. I, you know, I think it can be used for a whole host of reasons. As you know, we currently host a language-based program. We host two of our RISE programs here at the Hood School. We have a lot of additions. So for example, this year we had heating problem in our music room, which happens in schools. One of the cool student spaces we have here is a meta moment room. So a room for a student that might be having or experiencing a difficulty with regulating themselves. Or might just need to go and engage in an activity alone, maybe coloring, maybe a stimulus swing to get below that sensory input. So when we lost our music room because of the repairs, we lost our meta moment room. And now you could see that like the stuff's spilling out to the hollows, the emotions, because the students didn't have access to that space. That they typically just kind of went, well, that space will chill for a few minutes and then deescalated and were able to return to the classroom successfully. So we lost that. So when you lose little things here at the Hood School, you lose a lot because there's not a lot of extra space. With those programs in the building, we have many service delivery providers. So one of those rooms sits as an OT kind of space. Whether there's occupational therapists, speech and language consultants, a few others in there that are associated with the RISE program. The next room to it is a language-based classroom. And then across the hall is more of a space for, we're fully, as best as we can, pushing in for service delivery or on special education. So we're trying to make sure most of our services are provided in the general education classroom. Some services need to be provided outside that space. So one of those other rooms does that. And then we moved our digital learning room down there. So we currently have four classrooms down there. That, whatever needs a lot, I mean, I'm sure you've seen the pictures that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But anything that we could do down in that space, I think is worthwhile and definitely, it's perfect.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming in. Yeah, Dr. Daly?
I could just say to you, you know, the Hood School continues to be a great welcoming place, as that presentation showed. High scoring, high achieving, so much credit due to Mr. Dr. McKay and his incredible work. And, you know, I said to him today as we walked around, what he's managed as a leader this year is the hardest thing you have to do probably ever in your career. You know, and so he's done a tremendous job providing support for teachers, students, parents, thinking through the most difficult thing that we never ever want to experience. So I just want to publicly thank him for all he's done this year and every year.
I have a lot of support, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. McKay.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent job.
Thank you.
We have what?
The IRB, the, uh, what did I say?
Yeah, the research group.
Hood School third grade teacher.
Yes, we have Ms. Ellie Marcus here, so.
I'll be quick, something I have to follow. I'm Ellie Marcus, who's supposed to be at O'Leary, so very great teacher. She's a fellow candidate and a PhD candidate at UMass Lowell. UMass Lowell has a three-phase dislocation process. So the first phase, you come up with a concept, you present it, and it gets approved. The second phase is you do a small pilot study. And then the third phase is you do that study again at a larger scale and it's publishable. So I'm currently in phase two. So the study that I'm presenting to you can't be published. It really just needs me in doing my phase three, hopefully in the fall. It's pretty simple. It's whether adding ten minutes of physical activity for every forty-five minutes of learning affects students' social and emotional learning or SEL. So both of these things, physical activity and SEL, are obviously very important, but they're often not studied together and definitely not at the elementary level. When I was doing my research, it's very much at the middle school, high school level. I would just be so interested to see if the two intertwine with the younger children. We obviously know that kids need movement, it's an important thing for parents. It's important for me as a teacher. So I really just want to see what happens when we make that movement more intentional. So it is going to be six weeks long for our parents that participate. I'm hoping that I can get roughly twenty third, or twenty third grade students in one classroom to participate with me. The students will take part in two surveys, they're identical, one at the beginning and one at the end. And the survey questions are all SEL-based, so nothing about physical activity. It's just how you handle fights with friends, do you get in, do you get in fights? Do you feel good about yourself? It's all these different SEL questions that are, of course, all age-appropriate. And then speaking of just privacy and age-appropriate, everything that the kids do is going to be totally low-risk and, you know, safe. And it's, it's not crazy movement or anything like that. It's really up to the teacher's discretion. To be completely honest, I went in all year with my kids, just to like see how the movement affected them. I can't believe how amazing my community of children is and how much fun these can have. So the teacher that is right next door to me would be the one that's participating. I've already kind of shown her what we do, jumping track, jumping deck, sprints, stretching. There's extra time for EE and recess and snack time, outside time. So all of these different things I'll lay out for her and then she can try to implement it as well. And lastly, it's completely up to the parents and the students. So if they don't enroll their kid into the study, there's no harm or risk to them. They don't get penalized or anything. Students can also like drop out at any time. So if they're not feeling the movement anymore, they can stop and they'll have extra activities that they can do that doesn't require the movement.
Any questions? Yes.
Um, so the, um, the classroom that's administering this is not your classroom, it's at the other classroom, correct?
Yeah, so I, yes, the one- Yeah, so I, yes, the one that's like going to help me aid in my bigger study would be the second classroom.
Okay, and it's ten minutes a day?
Ten minutes for every forty-five minutes of learning.
Oh, oh, okay, ten minutes for every forty-five minutes. And do you have, are you, like you said jumping jacks, things like that, is that based on anything or is it just any kind of movement?
Well, I mean, for math, let's say the answer is nine, you can say do nine jumping jacks or whatever you think the answer is, maybe do that many pushups. I mean, that's kind of extreme. You might just have them like stand up and do something easy to start. But again, I've been doing this with my class all year and if they know the answers are nine, they're literally burpees and they can get some areas.
And are you, you're, um, you're incorporating this in some of the lessons that you're doing every day?
Yeah.
But you said also there could be an opportunity for extra like PE time or outdoor time and things like that.
Yep, so right now I, fifteen minutes for snack and then I do an additional ten minutes for play. So it's really, I've gone to the point where some of my kids don't even create snack more than it's like, I'm gonna play the whole time. And I haven't seen any effects like of hunger or anything like that. It's just really build a nice community. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't be forced, like, like they shouldn't be around there. And then for extra PE, it just lines up that third grade has this ten-minute slot between PE and lunch. And so I've already asked Matt, the PE teacher, if they could stay in there, the additional ten, and I just stayed in there with them. As a fact, I, I, okay.
Okay, great. And, and I don't imagine that any parent would opt out. But if there is an opt-out, is there, is that an obvious thing for them?
I have buckets already made, so it'd be like a bucket of toys or creation stations that they would take part in while the rest of the class is doing movement. If they totally opt in and they still want the movement though, that's completely fine too. We just don't want students to be left out.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
John?
I think this is wonderful and a huge, huge proponent of this. I think that the kids need more recess and movement and, and outdoor time. When you were saying doing some jumping jacks or burpees or things like that for ten minutes, is most of it still based inside the classroom? Or is, is a lot of it outside?
Definitely inside. I mean, there's gonna be special times where a teacher might decide to go outside. Like I built it into my schedule, but it's definitely mostly inside. And I do want to clarify, it's not just like ten minutes of straight jumping.
Yeah.
It really is one of the very broken parts.
We did have a long conversation too about the, the pros and cons of inside and outside.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, it's great today, but there's lots of challenges. We discussed that a lot, so I think there's that push to be outside and getting that fresh air, but to be able to, uh, to be a student.
Okay, even we transition, like I bring my kids outside for all transitions and that's just like a super easy way, like count two minutes and movement.
No, I think this is wonderful.
Thank you. Great. Good luck.
Thanks.
I have two questions. First one's sort of an answer, but just to be super clear. So the ten minutes doesn't have to be outside of any learning. It can be still doing the lesson while you're being active, correct? Okay.
It could also be second.
Okay. And then I guess the other question, and this is just more thinking about applicability if it were to be, you know, used by every school in the nation going forward. I think physical activity, does that count as time on learning in and of itself? Or is that, would that not count as time on learning if you're not also doing a lesson plan with it?
Yeah, I mean, I would assume it's not time on learning, but.
I don't know.
I would disagree a little bit. I would think that there's a strong argument either way.
Okay.
I have to defer to Dr. Daly on that, but I would say that like when I go out and I watch, for example, like for a group outside, we think that part of the, the trouble of the experience is that, that inability for them to problem solve on their own or make teams or engage and play a little bit. And I think there's a lot to be said if we opt demands like a kindergarten and they don't learn how to have those interactions. So I think that's significant part in, in the hope of, well, I'm drawing those opportunities. So it'd be interesting to like find a rule on there because I, I think we could make a schlong of it either way.
And I will say, it is completely crazy how much doing this, just again, it's all community. It's like you guys are working together for every single part of your day. They're really driven by that and I know every kid won't be, but this group certainly has over the, the year of this.
Okay, I, I just think for the expansion of it, if it were an idea that works, I think understanding what the rules of time on learning would, would be really important so that you can give the direction to teachers so that it still can fit within the curriculum.
Yeah.
Right. And again, I mean, even, you know, studying with my children in the past, sometimes like when you're studying, throwing a ball, if they get it right or whatever, just something add, I think it actually adds to, you know, the retention of, of knowledge as well sometimes if you do that.
So they did that attribute, they never passed the ball, you know, so it's just good to see.
Right. Okay. Well, I think we're close, most hits for us. So tell me, you want to make a motion to approve the research study for Mrs. Marcus, Ms. Marcus?
I'm going to approve the research study proposal by Ms. Marcus. And is this taking place this year or?
Yeah, so it'll, it'll be thrown out in six weeks.
Okay, okay, for twenty twenty-five.
Second, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? I oppose unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Daly?
Just very good to say, thank you, great presentation. And just as a, as a superintendent, it's so exciting to see our teachers engage in such high level of discourse going forward. Doctor, in a dissertation here, so congratulations. I can't imagine all that work with busy home life, full-time teaching and doing all this work. So it's really exciting and thank you for bringing all this knowledge back to the classroom. So thank you.
Hopefully something I enjoy, so thank you.
Let, let us know how it goes, do you?
Please.
Love to see. Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Buckley, should we do the vocal too and just we'll talk about surveys in general?
Sure, we can do that if you'd like.
We can do it quickly. I was hoping to do it quickly. So I just thought, given the, you know, just to address the, what's been in the news lately, there's been youth risk behavior survey that some of you may have seen that's out there. We, that is not something we currently administer. But just to review our practice as we just did, whenever there's a third-party survey, we always bring those forward to the school committee. We discuss that here. We share the questions ahead of time and parents always have the option to opt out of those as well. We do the core measurement survey, we're not doing youth risk behavior survey. And we are, the other survey that's on the agenda is the vocal survey, which is the optional survey that is at the end of the MCAS exam. We did send something out to parents just to let them know that this is coming up. They do have the option for students to not participate. But we just thought, given especially the, the practice that we have and also what's in the community around youth risk behavior, just to, even the vocal survey, which is a part of MCAS, just to let people know that we are participating in that and that if people want to not participate, there are ways to do that.
Okay. Anybody have questions on survey or anything?
I don't, I just, as a parent, I do appreciate the ability to review the surveys. I mean, it's just, it's nice to know. And so, I mean, that's always been the policy that we, that we've seen, whatever, whatever comes down the pipe that you're administering to kids. So as a parent and as a school committee member, that's a, you know, very, and should be reassuring to people who have questions.
Yeah, and I think, and I think just to follow up on that, I mean, I think when we look at it, not every survey is presented. They try to be non-political, they try to be education-based and there's a reason, there's a purpose for all of them. And so I appreciate the discretion in deciding what ones, you know, are worth, worth the time and which are not. Mr. Saddle?
Are we doing opt-out or opt-in? I know some districts have strong opinions on whether you should be opting in or out of these types of surveys.
Yeah, I, I'm not really familiar with anyone who successfully does opt-in. I, I think we have such trouble getting anyone, I mean, it's a great idea in theory, but if you think about the, the root cause, parents that are asking for that, didn't see the emails to begin with to opt out. So now you're saying for them to opt into things. It's the, trying to get it for a fun field trip. Principals and teachers will tell you they're constantly chasing down, to try to do that for every aspect of curriculum would be an impossible task. And so we think that giving, and further, I also think it's important for people to be aware of what it is, to see it. And there, there's a tremendous amount of value, even if you are opting out, to have as many people as possible participate to gather that information about what's happening in your community. So it's, you know, the questions in that survey, I think we always look at what's appropriate for North Reading. We also look at what's appropriate for developmentally for middle school. I think Dr. O'Connell does a great job of safeguarding against that and having those discussions. But there are many communities, things that might seem controversial here in a, in a community where there's a high drug abuse issue or a high pregnancy issue or a high, they want those type of surveys, they want that type of information. And so it's not necessarily one size fits all, so you try to look at what that is. But we, we've been very successful with the, you know, and I have had parents ask me that and I've addressed it that way. Opt-out is, is worked well for us. That's what the law suggests and that's what we found.
On the record, I apologize to every educator who has just chased me down, including the eighth grade field trips right now. So still have to, still have the eighth grade field trip.
And I'll also say, just because I think it's interesting, anyone who's listening, I am a parent, I've opted my, I've opted kids out of things before. And to know, it's not, it's not hard, you just say no, thank you. And it's, it's easy to do and the kids suffer no consequences.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the vocal survey for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I move to approve the vocal survey for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? I oppose unanimous. Okay. We can introduce.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. And we are proud to have our newest principal of the little school, Ms. Julie, is that Skiamana? Is that her name?
Shimana.
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 Shimana. Well, welcome.
Thank you. It's really nice to be here. I'm really excited to join the North Reading community. Do you want to have a little bit more about?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think Tim and I, Tim and I are your interviews. Curious, I, a little bit like why, where you're from, your background, why you are interested in this position? Do you have any, you know, therapy dogs at home?
So I come from Beverly. I did two years in Salem, a year in Lynn prior to that. But I was a elementary school teacher in Beverly for ten years before I transitioned into a literacy coaching position, which in our building is, or I guess in our district, depends on the building, but in my building was really a leadership and a, you know, assistant principal role. I decided to get my master's in administrative leadership back in two thousand seventeen, which I completed in two thousand nineteen. So, you know, since two thousand nineteen, we rolled right into COVID and I really just fell in love with, you know, I loved being with students, but I realized that my impact could be really even greater if I was working with teachers that were working with those students. So I don't live far from here, so that really attracted me to North Reading. I know great things about the district and the families and the community. And I was just really looking to kind of take my next step and, and join such a great place, so.
Therapy dog?
I have a dog that actually is the least friendly dog. She will allow me to come to school, right? She loves me, but other people, very protective.
Okay. I would say it's a, it's a welcome, welcoming community. I'm the only one that had kids in little school. We have all the batch parents here. But one thing I think is unique about our town is we have three different elementary schools that are all slightly different, but work really well together. And so love to, you know, see you lean on the leadership from the other schools, work well with them and, you know, bring some new ideas as well. Because, you know, we have a lot of experienced principals that have been here for a long time. So it's great.
It's great that you could come to tonight's presentation and see one of the best.
Yes, and those kids are great, so I'm glad I got to see them.
One of the three best elementary principals.
So the bar is not.
At the hood school.
Taking notes, that's for sure.
Well, welcome.
Thank you so much. And if you need anything from me, you can reach out, my, our friend.
Say the other way around, if there are things we can do to help you.
Yeah, for sure, absolutely. And welcome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Do we clap?
I don't know, I never know. Okay. Anything you want to do before budget? Okay. And we have a, we have a special guest in, in, in the audience, Mr. Goberto, the town administrator, so. Okay, fiscal year budget vote, so I'm gonna let Mr. Connolly, I believe, lead us in this.
So as Dr. Daly kind of pulls up the presentation, happy to report through the hard work of town administrator, Mr. Goberto, who's joining us this evening, just mentioned, and the finance planning team kind of hot up the press this morning. The finance planning team met and we identified some additional revenue. So there's even a, an update as early as this morning, as these numbers, as we know, always continue to be pretty fluid. But the, through the state budget, there's some additional chapter seventy revenue. The minimum state aid per pupil has risen, it's all, it's doubled from the amount of seventy-five dollars per pupil to a hundred and fifty. So that's part of the additional revenue.
Is that the highest it's ever been, one fifty?
Certainly in the last ten years. Yeah. So it's, it was set at about, usually rolls out around thirty dollars and gets kind of upraised with the houseways. Me typically go up fifty or sixty. Last year it was funding a little over a hundred dollars at the conclusion of the process, so this is, this is pretty high.
And, and I, and I think it's worth noting, just like even how we divide it, it's divided slightly differently this year, like how the town is choosing to do this. But I think a lot of that is specifically because the state has identified there's a real need to fund the education a little bit more this year. I think there's been a lot of issues that have been brought to the legislature's attention, which is why, you know, it is the highest we've seen in ten years. And so it's worth, I mean, it's always late in the game to get this information, but definitely appreciate it before we make cuts that.
Absolutely.
Then we'll be able to identify sort of a couple of cuts we'll be able to avoid specifically because of this revenue.
Correct. So certainly the, the chapter seventy increase is driving a lot of this. And then there's some changes to the regional school assessment costs that is a little bit lower. So the fixed cost side of the equation is also lower, some short-term debt changes as well. And all of those is netting to a little bit more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional revenue for, for the school budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. So we're definitely really appreciative of that and that collaborative effort that takes place with the finance planning team and the chairs and vice chairs, and Mr. Goberto and Laurie and Galvin, who worked really hard to, to identify revenue and creatively to, to make this process as challenging as it is year after year. You know, to, to, is, is, you know, to try to keep us kind of moving forward and protect the, the interests of the, of the school budget. So I'm gonna walk through some of the, the changes of the, of the school budget and what the remaining gap is. This is again the latest changes based on this, this numerous information. So taking you back to our original budget, which was a level services budget that was presented in March. It was discussed again at the public hearing on April seventh. That was a level services budget of forty-one million, three seventy-seven, eight oh one.
And Mr. Connolly, if I could, if I could just add also, it was level staffing as well this year.
Correct.
Because sometimes there's different, you know, level services to keep class sizes the same. This was not, not restoring anything from last year. Level staffing from this year, which is after however many cuts, about fifteen cuts or so that were made last year.
Correct.
Correct.
Absolutely. So that was a budget that was two point two million dollars higher than fiscal year twenty twenty-five's revised budget and a five point six percent increase. So we, we've talked in detail about the drivers of that, the salary obligations, some of the fixed costs, high fixed cost increases around utilities and transportation and maintenance areas, as well as special education and, and high district costs and the, 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 the challenges of, you know, funding the, these high fixed costs that we have to fund each year. These high percentage increases for both transportation, regular ed and special ed, and some of the high district, you know, tuition rates that we've dealt with over the last number of years. Were all drivers of why a, a level service and, and level staffing budget and not restoring any of the cuts from a year ago was a five point six percent increase. So the revised revenue plan, so we had to hot up the press revised revenue plan that we worked on this morning that identified additional revenue, lower fixed costs. Did, was a forty million, five, five, five oh four, five oh four increase, which would be three point four percent higher than fiscal year twenty twenty-five. We're also happy to report that through working with Mr. Goberto and the town, town accountant, the town finance director, Laurie and Galvin, we identified an additional effort to fund additional a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of sort of one-time cost and use, use of free cash to help increase some of the revenue over to the school departments, you know, side of the equation. So we, we've done that in the past. We're strategic on how we do that and what the line item we look at in that budget. But it certainly helps lessen the, the budget gap and challenges that we've been facing over the last number of years. So we're certainly appreciative of that process and the willingness to be flexible and to think creatively and outside of the box to use all available resources like free cash in this instance.
Like one number should I have, is this right?
That's correct, yes.
And, and, and Mr. Connolly, I'll just jump in for one second again, just to kind of comment on the municipal side as well. Because we're not the only ones making cuts, we're not the only one that has a challenge. I mean, our, our revenue gap was about seven hundred and twenty-three thousand and then there was some one-time funds that reduced that a bit. And the, the municipal side's about half a million as well, about. I mean, our, our revenue gap was about seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, and then there was some one-time funds that reduced that a bit, and the, the municipal side's about half a million as well, about five hundred thousand as well. So we're also, we're both making cuts.
Correct.
Just to kind of call that out.
So, um, so all in all, the remaining budget gap, kind of the most important line I'm here at the bottom of the slide, is reduced down to five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, to bring the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget into balance. So again, I just, I say this every year, I feel like I get to, we get to this point. A lot of work has gone in to reducing that number. Um, as, as challenging as that number is, um, and as difficult as the deliberations and the conversations that we've had as an administrative team, as a, as a school committee, as a budget, um, in budget workshops to, to try to identify a plan, at least a concrete plan to balance the budget. On April seventh, we were talking well over a million dollars of, of cuts, and we showed a list that was over a million dollars of cuts. So, um, a lot of work has gone in into bringing this number to what it stands today, um, and that speaks to that collaborative effort and that cooperation between the school and the town and the municipal side to, to work together. Um, and I think that was certainly the case, um, this year.
If I could also just acknowledge the hard work of Mr. Connolly, the principals in communicating this, and the, the staff who are many on the call right now, who are hanging on to see whether their jobs are there for them in the future. It's a very, very real situation. Um, more is going to be communicated out in the coming days, but this is very challenging for people to, to think about as my, as my job being reduced or not.
And, and as much as the hard work goes into it, and we're very proud of the work that went into minimize the cuts, this is still very, you know, it's great that it got reduced, this is still very painful. And it's still year on year cumulative effect that, that's gonna keep rolling until we hit, we solve our revenue problems, but we will keep doing the hard work. Everyone here and everyone who's not here to minimize the problem, but the word problem will still be in the sentence. And that is something we're not gonna forget, and the kids are still gonna be impacted by it, so it's.
Yeah.
I, I, I wanna ha, I acknowledge the good stuff and the hard work, but I also want to come back to, this still hurts.
Yes, absolutely. So the next slide is that, is the slide that kind of shows where we are at today, um, what's being recommended this evening as an attempt from the administration to the school committee to balance, to bring the FY twenty-six balance into budget. As Mr. Freeman just said, everything on this list is painful, everything on this list has, has an impact, as it is. We are talking reductions to existing positions, existing staff, existing programs, um, that is impacting level services. Um, what we have today carried forward into next, next year. Um, so it is certainly an impact that is gonna be challenging and that will be felt. As much of, as was just acknowledged, the hard work that has gone on over the last several weeks minimizing that impact is certainly gonna be, be a significant impact. Um, so these were items that were presented in detail at the public hearing. Um, we could talk a little bit about some of the, the, the positions that have, the expenses that have been reduced or look, or taken off this list, uh, but there's certainly an effort to, due to some attrition at the administrative level to, um, restructure some of those positions at all next to, um, one FTE administrative position being reduced. Um, again, that's through sort of the attrition, um, and that would lead to the savings of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, we at one point were talking about more elementary class, class teachers on this list and having more class sizes go above our optimum level and guideline that we paint for here in North Reading between eighteen and twenty-two students, and Principal McCade spoke about the importance of that and the principals. All elementary principals and all the principals at every level has speak to the importance of maintaining that class size. So although it's, it's positive that we're not talking about more elementary class teachers, there's, there isn't a classroom teacher here that still needs, would need to be impacted. Um, they were, we're looking at the secondary level, there's one high school classroom teacher being impacted, uh, so I should actually say one. That was a change from this morning. It was originally supposed to be two high school academic teachers being impacted, um, so now we're, we're down to one academic teacher. Um, but middle school was talked a, a lot about in depth at the public hearing, um, and some of the programs that are being impacted, world language, computer science. Uh, but there's four middle school classroom teachers being proposed for a reduction, um, and that, that, those cuts still remain for two hundred and eighty thousand. Um, there's a slight reduction to a middle school paraprofessional, um, general, general paraprofessional, not, not special ed, um, over point two reduction. Okay, that would be an eight thousand dollar, um, savings to the budget. Anything beyond this line, um, we're talking about user fee increases. I know we're gonna talk a little bit more a little bit later this evening about user fees. But we had voted a, a, a bus fee and, and addition of a late school bus fee, so those additions would help add additional revenue. As well as we had also talked about raising the preschool tuition fee, both from the full day program and the half-day program, and those, those two user fees got voted in at the last meeting. Um, we've also talked, I think we'll be talking about later this evening, um, increases to the performing arts and athletic user fees. As we know that those programs both have revolving accounts that help offset the budget and offset those expenses for that program. Not only the, the staff working in the fine arts, in music, performing arts programs, and the athletic coaches and so forth, but also the various of expenses to support those programs um, have increased significantly. So there's really a necessary adjustment there. Um, so that is sort of the balancer, would be the final recommendation to increase some of those user fees to, to close the full gap and bring the budget into balance. Um, we talked at the public hearing in detail, and I think Mr. Sutherland had some good questions and, and noted, and not, notated it in the budget book, that some of these revolving accounts, you know, have sort of a structural problem that exists, that the expenses that were, because of these large increases, um, that sort of uncontrollable large, um, you know, increases to the athletic trainer for one, the transportation cost that are, that we're seeing is high inflationary escalators that have happened in all these last number of years. The expenses are outweighing the revenue that we're bringing in. Um, so we really need to adjust the user fee or the revenue to just maintain status quo. Maintain these programs, maintain the, 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 um, level of, of coaches to athlete ratio, the level of, um, fine, fine art program services that we're receiving to, to maintain. So it's, it's not, and it increases, it necessarily always adding an additional offset to the budget, because we have to make up a gap and kind of correct part of that structural deficit that's been existing, where we're seeing more of that, of the expenses outweigh revenue. So we, we've done that in this adjustment, and I think that, that was really a necessary adjustment that we, uh, have proposed here. So all in all, this, this, these changes, um, would get us to the five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollar amount to complete the budget gap, that remaining budget gap. Uh, we are talking, um, seven point two positions, um, in total, which again is a challenge, and it will have an impact, as Mr. Freeman said, it's not easy. Any position from this point forward, when we're talking less than level services, will have an impact, and we already talked about fifteen positions that, um, were reduced last year after the field, field override. Um, but these are the recommended, recommended, um, administrative changes to, through, to, to the school committee and through the budget subcommittee that we've been discussing, that we're proposing this evening. Um, I'm just gonna go with this last slide and open it up to questions from the, from the chair and from the committee.
Could I just add a?
Yeah, please.
Just to be clear too, these, these are positions, the, the ripple effects due to licensure, seniority, other pieces may affect other schools. So it might stay in middle school, but it's affecting high school, um, as well. Same with high school teacher cuts might impact other buildings. So it sort of has an effect across the whole district, and I want to make sure it's clear. And we, as always, we will try to find places for people, but there's, you know, there's no doubting that these cuts are to positions and to opportunities for students and for programs for students.
And, and, and I'm gonna just jump in on with three, three or four quick points here.
Yeah.
Number one, I just want to call out what was saved. So one elementary position, one, uh, high school position, one general par, uh, district paraprofessional, and a point six that specifically addresses special education programming.
Yeah.
So it was originally ten point eight at the public hearing, so it's seven point two. Um, second thing to call out, at least a couple of people in the community continue to question, what is a cut? And I just want to be super, super clear about this. If a position is cut at the hood school and a teacher retires at the little school, and that teacher that gets cut moves over to the little school, it's still a cut. Somebody retired and they weren't replaced, and so I think people are having a trouble understanding, saying, well, I, that person got cut, but I see that she's teaching still. Two teachers left, one of them came back, it's still one teacher down. And so just to be super clear when we're talking about this, people move around, but the position that needs to be cut is being cut. If that person can then take another job in a different department, a different role, it is still a cut that is happening. So last year, there were, I think, three positions that we wanted to add in order to keep level services. Those would have been additional positions to keep level services, but there was about twelve and a half actual positions that were cut from the budget, so the FTE is last. And we're talking about seven point two less FTE positions that would be, that would happen. Um, and then just on the user fees very quickly, just to kind of emphasize what you said a little bit more. Every single reserve that we had in the school department this year is lower than it was last year. Every single one, not, not just a few, every single revolving account is less than it was last year. So we spent more than we brought in for revenue in every single one, and a few of them are so bad that there's no way we could do it again. We would literally be going into the budget more because, you know, like the athletic fee, the athletic user fee, for example, or the reserve account, we spent more than we have remaining in it this year. So that's where some of this is done. So the user fees are much higher than this in terms of increase, but a lot of that is just to get back to level.
Correct.
So that the money coming in is equal to the money going out. We're not, like, you'll see the user fees are a lot higher than this. We're able to do a little bit for the budget, but a lot of it is just getting back to where the same amount is coming in as, that is going out each year.
Yeah, great, so, great, thank you.
Um, so revised budget conclusion, I think there was some good comments by members that attended the public hearing about what can we conclude from the budget? And, um, so we've kind of made some revisions to where we stand today based on what's being proposed with the reductions to balance the budget. And certainly, um, you know, what does the budget do? Well, it certainly meets our contractual obligations, salary obligations with our staff, with our employees and employee unions. We sort of, we certainly need to do that, and that's always the largest driver of the school budget, as you've talked about, being eighty, eighty-two percent, eighty-three percent, um, personnel. Um, we also need to, had adjusted the budget for these fixed operational cost increases. We've seen busing rates, double-digit busing rate increases. Eight, nine percent for regular transportation, twenty-five, thirty percent for special ed transportation. Utility costs are all going up, so we've had to adjust the budget. So it certainly meets these contractual obligations, um, on the personnel side, and these contractual services, uh, increases, fixed cost increases really on the expense side of the equation. Um, what does it impact? We've talked about the elementary teacher, the middle school teachers, the high school academic teacher. Um, and we're certainly gonna see an impact to student, you know, sound student teacher ratios at all levels. We saw that last year, we're seeing that again. Is it to a lesson degree because of the additional revenue that's been identified over the last twenty-four hours? Certainly, but it's still gonna have an impact. Um, and we talked about it at the secondary level, particularly the middle school, which impacts after world language and computer science programs. Um, will certainly be the, the significant, probably the largest significant impact here with these reductions. Um, with the high school academic teacher, the overall just breadth and depth of that curriculum, um, as well as the class size will be impacted. And then on the administration restructuring and the less position will be certainly be impacted, just the overall oversight and supervision on the administration side. Um, so those are certainly high-level impacts, and then we also, some of the things that we're maintaining is that the rest is, is our technology program in terms of continuing to offer one-to-one, um, student device program in all grades, K through twelve. Um, we are a lot, the increases in some cases, the user fee increases, some cases finding more revenue and grants, um, to provide student transportation to access for athletic and our fine art programs, um, however, with increased user fees to families. So we're doing that same level of services for regular transportation, for athletics, for fine arts programs that we are doing currently, but we are increasing the user fees back to, to the families. Uh, which is something that we've never looked on lightly in, in, as, you know, for a number of years, certainly it's been a school committee budget goal to look at reducing that, it just hasn't been a reality because of these high, high fixed cost increases. Um, and certainly we still believe we have the operational costs within the budget to adequately maintain all of our five schools and our campuses. And we want to, we think that's very important that we have the funds to do that. Um, so then that's what this budget, we can conclude from this budget, it's not a fancy budget, doesn't do, um, anything that we would have liked to have done with our strategic plan initiatives. Um, and it's, it is a budget that's less than level services, but again, the positives with the hard work that's occurred between April seventh and April twenty-eighth. Um, some of those reductions have lessened, um, because of the additional revenue and less, and fixed cost changes to the, the revenue plan. Um, so what we're asking the committee to do this evening is to, to vote the budget. Um, there's a motion here that reflects the latest changes. Um, it is an increase now of about four point one percent, um, over fiscal twenty-five, or in total, a little more than one point six million dollar increase over fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Um, voting the budget this evening will allow us to forward the, the budget on to town administrator's office so they can prepare for the annual town meeting on June ninth and prepare the, the warrant, the article and so forth, so, um, with that, I'll open it up to any more discussion, any questions?
Any questions from the vendors?
Uh, sorry, just one specific and then one general. With the saving of the one elementary school teacher, I know there was gonna be, uh, one grade in one school that had class sizes that I think were maybe twenty-six. Do we know if that helps that, or is it, we won't know till the ripple effect?
If that, that is helping that, that cohort of students in that elementary school.
Okay.
So we're not gonna see those class sizes go twenty-five, twenty-five to twenty-six.
Okay. Um, and this is, this I guess is just a general question. You know, Tim and I spoke to the, the little school PTO the other night. We're speaking to the batch PTO, PTO tomorrow. We know that not everyone is online and listening, and we're trying to let people know what's happening with the budget and educate them. But with the second year in a row of cuts and transportation costs aren't gonna come down, utility costs aren't gonna come down. When I go in front of this group of parents tomorrow night, what am I saying? What, where are we going from here, right? Like, what is next year gonna look like? I know we're just trying to approve the budget tonight, but wait, what can we do? What, what, what's the message of how, how can, you know, the community be more involved? How can we move forward and try to figure out?
Yeah.
How we go beyond what we're calling level services?
Yeah, that's a great question.
To go back to our strategic plan.
And I think we know there's sort of that structural deficit and problem with municipal school, you know, funding and kind of fund school budget that exists. It's not necessarily a North Reading.
Yeah.
Problem. Um, we've seen, you can read, you know, across, um, Massachusetts and some area communities that are feeling this even more. And is, that's just a structural problem that exists because revenues are capped, as we know, at two and a, at two and a half percent, and expenses grow especially over these last five years at a much higher rate. And we've, we've felt that. Um, we have worked really hard to be creative as possible within the con, the confines of proposition two and a half and the revenue that is available um, to lessen these reductions year after year. And I know last year we were standing here and saying, you know, we, we did almost too good a job of that for so long.
Yeah.
To make it work, and then it's now gotten to the point, last year and this year in particular, where we can't, we can't solve it by, by doing those small sort of Band-Aid approaches. Uh, and that's why we're seeing the reductions that we're seeing occur without additional steps like two and a half, you know, op, operating budget override, which I know failed a year ago, but we really need to create more revenue to move forward and fix, and fix this problem.
I'd like to answer that too, the, I think the slide, we can get it to you, that we had last year, that talks about the multiple year.
Yeah.
So we, we've seen this year after year, like Michael just said, we kind of figured out a way to make it work to the credit of everyone in the room, but also to the detriment of the people not understanding the bigger problem. So that's why we called it out last year to say it's not, this, this year's gonna be bad, next year's worse, the year after that even worse. Um, luckily, there were some adjustments made this year. This year's still very bad, not as bad as I thought it could have been last year. But we followed through and had to deliver on some of those things. Last year we put up a big list, and this is the slide I'm talking about. this is the slide I'm talking about,
Yeah.
about programs that we impacted. World Language was one of them, Computer Science is one of them. These are, these are programmatic changes that are gonna impact kids for years to come. This isn't something, you restore it next year and everything's fixed even, right? Because kids are then off track and they're not having the classes to get into. So you need to get out ahead of it. People need to look at, in the news and see what's happening in other communities. It very quickly escalates to redistricting, closing the schools, having to do things that we don't wanna consider doing. So we need to get out ahead of it. My message to people that I've been saying, and we should continue to say, to my mind, there's three solutions. There's probably a fourth and a fifth, and I'd love to hear them. But we have to either fix this at a higher level, at the state level. And the good news, as we shared tonight, I think we are starting to hear that because we're seeing this. This is not a north writing problem. This is across the state. We're seeing it all everywhere. So they're looking at the Chapter Seventy formula, they're looking at all these different aspects that, the school funding and some of these budget drivers. So that's happening. So that, continue to advocate and rally around that and talk to the elected officials that way. Number two is looking at town revenue and how we can increase growth in town so that we can reduce those numbers. And number three is to consider, you know, what an override would do in order to restore some of these budgets and allow us to move forward with our district vision. So I encourage people to get involved. That process that we're going through with N R P S twenty thirty is to say, where do we wanna be in five years? I don't think anybody's gonna say we wanna be cutting more, right? So when we talk about that vision of where we wanna get to, part of that question is how do we get there? And so I, I wanna engage people in that process.
No, thank you. That, that's very helpful. And Michael, I'm sorry, I should've promised it with, like, whenever Tim and I are talking, you know, people at either formal meetings or just on the sidelines, or, or all of us, you know, we, we talk about what a great, great job that you guys have done, and, you know, that this isn't from a, you know, an administration level. So talking about all, all three of those sound break, is there anything specifically the school should, school committee could be doing more in coordination with the town to help with revenue growth? I don't know, so.
I think just advocating as much as possible and educating the community and the groups that are out there, what the, what the problem is, what the, what the challenges are, what's at stake moving forward as much as possible. We work hard to have as much participation as possible. I think that has increased and has grown over the last number of years, the last few years in particular. I've been there twelve years and I've seen, although it does seem small, there's more, there's more engagement. And the more that can be, I think that's gonna help, you know, educate that the problem is, is real, and it takes some time to see that impact, but it's gonna start being felt if we don't start to correct it, correct it.
Yeah, and I, I'll jump in on answering that question a little bit, too. I think people have to be involved. Like, you can sign in on your computer or watch at home school committee meetings, but also select board meetings. People have to go to town meeting. People have to go to select board meetings. Like, they can't just hear from the same ten or twelve people every time that are saying, we have a, we don't have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem. Well, we do have a revenue problem, and so the select board has to hear from other people, you know, that, you know, care about these things. And so, you know, I hope town meeting is pissed off at, at this budget, and I hope that a lot of people are there. They were there last year about the override, but I hope a lot of people are here this year, even though we'll present a balanced budget to the town, town meeting. I think you just have to be involved before it's too late. And to answer your brother, broader question about, like, where does this go? I mean, I don't see how we're not cutting fine arts classes next year. I don't know, see how we're not cutting athletic programs next year. Like, we can't continue to pay fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars per player for collaborates. We can't continue to offer the breadth of, you know, of fine arts and athletic programs. You know, we can't continue to offer classes that have eight kids in there. It might be the only AP class that's offered, you know, and it might be really important to those eight, ten kids taking it, but that's what's on the, on the agenda. And, you know, i- if we, if we wait till next, you know, May to try to do it, it's gonna be too late. And so we need to organize it earlier and talk about it earlier.
And if we're, if we're talking about cutting any more elementary teachers, for example, you can't start making classes up in the thirties, so you're gonna have to start moving people to different schools to balance them out. And so that, that certainly is gonna have to, if we're, if we're talking about cutting another million, we're having that redistricting conversation as well, which is not a pleasant conversation that people wanna have.
I would suggest it's, it's not only energizing your base, it's expanding support. I mean, the, it, it, starting early and being able to expand beyond what the people that did vote or would ordinarily be passionate about voting. We've gotta really work on as much as possible bringing a percentage of people in that either wouldn't vote for this, or didn't understand it, or however, however it is, we've gotta deal with, uh, expanding what we've got. Because if we wanna really increase revenue, and we are, if we are talking about the, the third option of, of, uh, doing an override, then the challenge isn't getting the people that are passionate about it. I mean, it's the challenge of people who either aren't or wouldn't ordinarily vote for it. So to me, it's, it's a caveat to yours, but it's, it's not.
Go to candidate night. There's one tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna get on the soapbox a little bit, so I'll let you two go first. It's just on the, no offense, there we go.
Thank you. Um, one question that had been brought up before, and I just, it, maybe it hasn't happened yet, um, but there was the idea of a health insurance carrier change? Has that researched?
Yes.
That's part of it?
That's part of it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But, but good call on it. I mean, like, the people in town are agreeing to change their health insurance and the provider that they're going through, which has a lot of, you know, you know, questions. People are nervous about that, but it's a, it's a good give back by, I think, the employees as well, so.
Okay, so that's part of this.
It's also an example of something that we're not gonna keep getting, like,
Yeah.
Yeah.
One time to jump.
That's a well we're not gonna be able to draw from again.
And I know this has been talked about a lot, but, um, just, I think, a lot of people would like to hear it again, um, that, you know, this is, this is pretty devastating. I think we all agree this budget is devastating, especially at the middle school level, um, and the world language program especially. Um, and pre my time here, um, I know that there was a point in time where the arts program had a similar, um, you know, it was gutted essentially, and it took years to build that back.
Mm-hmm.
Years. So what do you see, um, as the, like, this is an effect, of course, immediate, but what do you see as, like, this is, what is this? I think the community wants to know what this is doing to the world language program, and what is that built back even gonna look like?
Yeah, I mean, the students who are not enrolled in French at the high school level right now are not guaranteed French. Um, we're hoping some of the students in eighth grade who would be going into French two would continue French. But for everyone else, we're now a one-language community, which is not where we wanna be. The good news is, we do have a plan to continue to offer world language and cultural offerings that all students will be able to have at the middle school level. Our plan, you know, at, at this stage is to look at something that's similar to an exploratory program that we've offered in the past, so students will have some engagement with language. We will reengage global child at the middle school. And then our goal would be to slowly bring back and hopefully introduce new languages in the future to build back. But that's gonna require funding. And, and as I said earlier, similar to these other pieces, you can't fix that in one year, as you just said. It takes years to kind of rebuild that. So even if you introduce it again next year, you don't have that foundational level that you have now. And there's students that have had a half year of Spanish or a half year of French that now, that's not getting fulfilled for, for several years until they get to high school. So it's not a, a wonderful transition at all, and, and it will take time to, to recover. But we will do our best. And, you know, I, our hope will be, if we are able to get back on track with additional funding in the future, to build back in the best way possible, to add new languages possibly, new, you know, we've talked about Mandarin, we've talked about, you know, other programs in the future and continuing to build them back. Similarly, with the computer science piece, that standalone course that every student had is now going to be a general arts offering. So it will be available for students. Not every student now will be guaranteed that. But most students will still receive that. Most students will continue to receive robotics each year, and we'll continue to build that as we get to high school. And we'll, we'll continue to think outside the box with ways to give students offerings in high school and middle school to build. But it's, it's not easy to do with the staff. That's one of my biggest concerns, is some of the people that we may be losing are some of our, you know, best and brightest people. It's never, it's never a great situation. And even just the, the pain of this conversation back and forth, it starts to, you lose trust in the district. You know, we have great longevity in our staff, and when we start having to have people on the fence every year, it makes people not wanna come here, it makes people not wanna stay here. And so hopefully, our people are, are trusting and we're able to, you know, keep as many of our staff as possible, um, moving forward.
Um, one, thank you. Um, and just another question, you know, we're bringing this, we're bringing this recommended budget to town meeting. Is there going to be a budget presentation, like, are we, are, is either you or school committee, is there a, the opportunity to do sort of a short, a short version of a budget presentation at town meeting?
We haven't had that discussion yet, but there are, there's always that possibility. I'm not sure.
I just think it's, you know, we're encouraging people to go to town meeting to get mad, to get upset. And it would be nice to demonstrate to a broader audience, like, why these people are, what, like, why we're, why this is so devastating. And then even if it's short and sweet, I know we want, we try to encourage people to come to meetings, and they've, we've gotten much better at sharing information, but I think, like, we need to keep repeating this. Like, this is, this is what's happening. And it's, and whether it's us presenting or, or you, Dr. Daly, I think that needs to happen, um, even if it's brief.
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to make short videos. Michael makes great videos. We can send those out and we can, you know, we can talk about this later with the social media agenda item, but we can also take that slide from last year and update it with some new pieces, you know, for what we really see for next year now that we're in this, you know, and to get that out there so people really get that, that understanding. But I think it's what, you know, it's also hearing from people tonight. You know, Ms. Erone spoke to it about the class size that she had this year. I mean, it's, it's the little things that add up and take time before you realize, you know, it would've been great to have those interventionists four years ago, and now we've got students that didn't have that support in first, second, third grade that are now, you know, in fourth grade, and they really, they've lost that. And it takes some time to realize those, those cuts sometimes, unfortunately.
Mr. Connelly? Uh, question and a comment, I guess. The, the two things I was the most concerned with were the elementary class sizes. Just curious on, I'm thrilled that we're able to reduce one of them. Just the decision between the high school and elementary school with those cohort sizes, one of the cohorts would still be probably twenty-four-ish. Would think we're, would think we're lower than that?
Yeah, it's lower than that. I, I think it would be, yeah, it would be in those numbers. We just felt when we looked at those numbers at the, at the little school that we could, you know, again, it's the lesser of two, two tough decisions, right? So just, the batch older one was absolutely at the bottom of our, or we'll say, reverse order was number one. Um, when we looked at what the impact would be at some of these cuts at the other places across the board, and quite honestly, I'm also looking at that, and I'm balancing out losing good staff and unemployment costs. So if I can move those things around and be able to keep people without, I mean, because there, there is a financial reason, um, to retain staff and not riff them. Not just, um, you know, obviously not wanting to lose good people.
Right.
So we just felt that we have more flexibility within licensure to try to do things by retaining that position. And we feel that the class sizes that would be at the little school are manageable. I think if we went to the three classes, that would be very optimal. And I think with, within those, we're still under that twenty-five number. And, and because it's a fifth grade, we feel that that's closer to where they'll be in middle school. They switch classes, so we felt that they could handle that. So that's why we prioritize batch older.
And I guess, we really just a comment, um, I see, impressed me with almost twenty people on the, on the Google Meet, that's good. Um, you know, I, again, thank you guys for putting this together and humoring dozens of questions over the last several weeks as I looked at the binder. I mean, I think it's important for the community to know that we're, you know, we're voting on this budget here, and, you know, we still see the six hundred thousand dollars for the cuts here. None of these are good, to, to all my colleagues who already said. I'm very much in agreement with Miss Linders that we, at this point, we have a structural problem, right? And it's to no fault of anybody in this room or, or putting this together, right? That we are now faced with, after this year, even more dire decisions moving forwards. I think it's important for the community to know it. So you look at the elementary schools, and, and Dr. Daly, to your point, we're looking at classes of thirty or redistricting, redistricting next year without some sort of change in the, uh, in the budget for next year. So I think that's important for the community to know. I mean, we've enjoyed a lot of, um, great decisions, and we've been able to hide a lot of things kind of over the last ten years. And maybe hide is a strong word, but you guys did a really great job of, of moving money around and finding ways to do things. But I think we are at a structural deficit within the town now, and I think the town does need to know that, right? There's no magic bullet. And moving forward, I think that's something we need to get early. We know this is a problem for next year, today. So although we're voting this budget today, I think it's important, and when we go to town meeting to know on June, what is it, ninth, when we go to town meeting, we know going into next year is a problem. So we can't act surprised in October, November, December, when we started getting these initial numbers, and we know that now. And to Scott's point, I think, you know, we're looking at big decisions, right, redistricting, elimination of programs. What do we do with athletics? What do we do with busing? These are going to be big, potentially, you know, altering for some families on, on how their school experiences. And I think we need to know that now, get that out there to the community now, because I think it's, uh, this is, at this point, I think we are looking at some very substantial changes for next year.
And I'll, I'll jump on my soapbox for a minute. I'll start with, oh, Mr. Connelly, excellent job. I mean, we, we gave you numbers at like ten-thirty this morning, and to put it all together is, is great. Similarly, Mrs. Galvin, um, on the town side, did an amazing job. Thank you to Gobergo and Dr. Daly for their hard work and trying to figure out, because honestly, some of the hardest positions is, are your positions, trying to decide where to make these cuts, um, talking to all the different people that report to you, and it's not easy. It's not easy to be the one that has to, you know, throw that ax down, and there's no right answers in any of this. And so, um, thank you guys for, for doing that. Um, I, I'll just say, a big part of me wants to vote no on this budget because I'm embarrassed. I'll be honest, like, I mean, I moved to this town for the school. So many people did. You know, there was a house that I loved in, in another district. I said no to because the school looked like it was falling apart. They were on the verge of losing accreditation. There were big systemic issues. I was just so upset because we loved the house. But I'm like, no, it's, it's not about the look of the house, or, you know, how easy it is to get to the highway. Like, it's about the schools. That's what we care about. And I'm just thinking to myself right now, would I come to North Reading right now? You know? Like, we're gonna be a school with one language. A few years ago, we were having the conversation of adding a third language, you know? We're gonna be a school that doesn't give, like, you know, we'll have an exploratory program. We don't start teaching kids, you know, foreign language until, you know, ninth grade. I went to school in upstate New York, took Latin in seventh grade. You know, it's embarrassing what we're getting to. You know, and everybody says, well, it's not a north writing problem. I agree with that. But you know what? A lot of other districts are putting overrides on, and about half of them are passing it. It's a north writing problem that we're not angry about this, and that we're not, not thinking about, is this a town we wanna live in or not? I mean, it's embarrassing. And I don't know, I mean, I'm wondering, like, should we put the override for this year or not? But, you know, everybody was so upset about last year. I get it, but it's embarrassing, you know? And I'll be honest, a lot of me wants to say no to this budget, but we have to work with what we have. But just, we all need to think about this, you know? We're gonna be a, a community, a, a school district that offers one language starting in ninth grade. You know, I mean,
It still pays for kindergarten.
Yeah, it still pays for kindergarten. I mean, twenty years ago, we weren't like this, you know? And again, it's just, it's just bad. And so, you know, I appreciate all the work that's been gone into this, but, you know, again, a big piece of me wants to say no to this budget, and, 'cause it's, it's just bad. It's just a bad thing that we're doing. And, you know, I hate that we're gonna be the ones that, you know, voted in favor of these cuts, you know? And, I don't know.
Can we all say no?
I mean, it's just, no, I mean, if we all say no, we don't have a budget to go to town meetings. I think we have to say yes to this, but I don't know, I just wanna point
out. It doesn't get better if we say no.
Right.
No, no, it's heartbreaking.
Right, but.
And, and just to reiterate, again, publicly, because we have more viewership than usual, you, it's too late for an override, for, it's too late for this year.
For all practical.
For all practice.
It is. But in any event, let's have a motion to approve the budget, so.
I believe the school committee approved to adopt the final FY twenty-six school operating budget of forty million, seven hundred and eighty thousand, forty-nine dollars. This represents an increase of four point one percent or one million, six hundred and eight thousand, seventy-nine dollars over fiscal year twenty-five.
We have a motion. Who wants to throw it to that second? Second, Mr. Sutherland. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Regurgitating aye.
Regurgitating aye. Opposed? Passes unanimous, five zero. Thank you, everyone.
No, thank you.
Okay. School choice vote. Dr. Daly, you wanna lead us? Thank you, Mr. Gobert.
So we're just gonna shift gears into school choice. So annually, this is an annual requirement that we vote whether we're gonna be a school choice district or not. We look at this every year and we still feel partly, in large part because of the conversation that just took place and that has taken place over a number of years, that adopting school choice kind of under these very tight fiscal constraints would just potentially result in additional funding challenges. We just talked about the need for optimum class sizes and that being our, our biggest, you know, issue that we've tried to address and the biggest concern with these reductions. And we, the administration does feel adopting school choice under these current, with our class sizes already at max level in many of our elementary schools and many of our secondary schools as we proceed with these reduction, reductions over the last few years would just kind of add to, to the issue. And then we do, I do feel that new school choice revenue would just be needed to increase staff as opposed to not enhance our programs. Ideally, you wanna be able to enhance programs with new revenue. So that is in large part why we would be prepared to recommend not being a choice district. Certainly, you know, not having, I'm just gonna highlight a few that are kind of recommended in the memo. Not having discretionary power over incoming non-district school choice students certainly could create some further challenges. The majority of our neighboring school systems are, are not school choice district, districts. I know Reading has recently, in some aspects, become choice in, in certain, certain areas, but the majority have not. And certainly, if more and more districts in this geographic area were to become school choice students, it could impact sort of chapter seventy revenue flowing through all the surrounding communities and could have, just compound the potential revenue issue that already, already exists. Currently, the North Reading has eight school choice students that are all attending the Tech Connections, you know, academy. So they're all students that have opted to go virtual, virtual schools. So we all see a lot of students sort of opting out of North Reading to go to other school choice community, communities or options out there in, you know, in, in the area. So that, that's one, it'd be some information that we do include. And obviously, we're not receiving any students saying those are students that are kind of sending out to other school choice opportunities. But it's, those are personal choices to go to sort of virtual schools that, that's available. I think those are some of the, some of the highlights. I know the motion that is typically in there is kind of a very confusing motion. But this is a requirement that we report this to the Department of Education in May of every year. So talking about this in voting this, this evening allows us to meet that deadline. But I think in large part because of the challenges of the last couple of years, the, the max class sizes, particularly at the elementary level and growing class sizes, given the reductions in the secondary level, we are recommending that we don't be a school choice district for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Any questions? Somebody wanna make that motion? Do you, do you guys see the motion in language?
Sure, I see it.
I could make it maybe without the motion in language, but I move to, uh, law fragment. Does that make sense? Um, becoming a school choice district at this time.
Second. Right, do we need, we don't need any reason under doing, Mr. Connolly?
No, um, Dr. Daly, is it, is it important to actually read? I know this motion is always very wordy and confusing. Should we actually read the language?
The school choice?
The school choice?
Is it, is it just like, oh, wait.
Well, not through school choice. So it'd be as simple as that.
It just starts there.
Yeah, I think that should be fine.
Okay.
We're fine on that, aren't we?
Yeah.
The way, the motion that was just made.
We're fine on that, okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think a few do. We're trying to do this, Dr. Daly. Okay, North Shore Education Consortium FY twenty-six budget. Didn't we look at this before?
I hope we did. Did we do SEEM on North Shore? We did SEEM.
We did SEEM, only, though we did both of them.
So this is just informational. One of the things we do as, as a member here is to just share some of the amazing programs that North Shore Consortium offers. We do not currently have a tremendous amount of students attending these programs, but when I visit there, we have our, our, you know, regular meetings at the building. Just seeing the, the needs that are being met by the incredible staff and, and leaders at that, at that program. And we are so fortunate to be a part of, of this collaborative. And for the students that do attend there, they certainly see a huge benefit at a, at a very reduced cost as to what this would cost privately. A lot of students in these programs are receiving care for medical needs. They're receiving care for, you know, for some other highly specialized student disabilities and special needs. So this is just a summary of the budget. Again, they're facing a lot of challenges as, as is everyone. But I just like to present this to you every year. I think this budget overview does a nice job of giving you a great sense of the, of the group. I did participate in their autism five K this year as well. I don't think there's a picture of me this year, but I think we made the budget book last year. Did it with my kids as well.
You finished in the top three, right?
I, I walked. My kids, my kids, my kids ran. And last year, my son came in dead last. That was his pride, but my, my older two boys did well, so. But I don't know if there are any questions about the budget. Do we have two students now?
Yeah, we might be up to four students now.
I don't have any questions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, you wanna update us on the MSBA statement of interest?
Just wanted to share that we did submit that based upon the vote that came in from here. We have not heard anything more at this time on that. But as Dr. McKay shared earlier, that certainly would be beneficial to this building to have, you know, a new project and any support that we can get if possible from MSBA. I'll be sure to communicate that out if we can more about next steps. But I just wanted to make sure it was clear that we did bring that for, I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, we did the survey already. School, your fees. Do we wanna do this or do we wanna pass over?
Um, I mean, we can, we can sort of talk about it and the desire to move forward with some of the changes. Of course, I don't have a handout for it, but I know that we, at the last meeting, we, we talked about it. And we thought because of the tie line of registrations and communication out to families for particular the busing program, which that communication did go out shortly after the last meeting, as well as the, the preschool program. We thought that those two in particular were important to, to complete at the April seventh meetings. So, um, those have been communicated. The other two that was referenced in the presentation today that we felt unnecessary to bring the budget into balance would be the performing arts at the high school and the middle school user fees, as well as the athletic user fees at, at the high school. What has been proposed and I've certainly have gotten feedback from certainly the, the budget, the, the program leaders in, in both performing arts at the high school, middle school, as well as the, the FA director, Mr. Johnson at the high school. The current user fee for the high school performing arts is sort of similarly to, is structured as, at the, as the athletic program where it's a sort of a rolling, user fee where it's two hundred dollars for the first activity, one hundred for the second activity, fifty dollars for the third activity with a six hundred dollar family cap. And then similarly to the middle school, same structure, one fifty for the first activity, seventy-five for the second activity and fifty dollars for the third activity with a four hundred and fifty dollar family cap. That's current.
Okay.
So what we had talked about through a budget subcommittee meetings that we had is to generate the additional revenue that is reflected to bring some of that structural deficit back in line, as well as to help the operating budget a little bit more, particularly for performing arts, is that we felt we were gonna move to sort of a, a straight, sort of two hundred dollars, at the high school, you know, two hundred dollars per activity. Where they do a first, second, a third activity, it's two, it's two hundred dollars, you know, a, a activity with a one thousand dollar family cap. Based on that, that would certainly generate the, the additional revenue that we felt we needed based on the participation of, you know, certainly well over five thousand dollars, which was reflected in the presentation. And then at the middle school level, keeping that same structure, instead of having a tiered one fifty, seventy-five, fifty, we were gonna recommend a one hundred and fifty dollar user fee per activity with a six hundred dollar family cap. And that would generate the additional, some additional revenue, you know, close to three thousand dollars at the middle schools.
So the high school was a two hundred each with a thousand dollar cap?
Yes.
So that's five activities, whereas the middle school is one fifty with a six hundred, so that's only four.
Yeah.
That's four for the cap?
Yeah.
I would personally like to see a couple of things before we vote on this. I'd like to see what we do through the universal cap. I think that should be in conjunction with this when we put it out. I think we should talk about the, the universal cap. And just looking at the caps, like making sure they're sort of similar, sort of it's like four activities, like. Again, I, I, I just think we should have a little bit further discussion on that and maybe get the data again. But we haven't talked about the universal cap, because this year, is it eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred dollars, yeah.
And like, what does that need to go up to? I think we should see all of it together.
I agree, yeah. And I can, um,
Yeah.
Pull together the participation to, and I have, I have a chart here that I included in the packet I should have that just shows you what the conversation took place when we met as a budget subcommittee in terms of the number of students that would be impacted, the current user fee and that needs increases, the additional revenue, actually that everything stays to escrow. But I think, I think that, that what we were sort of looking to do was sort of, I think, across the board, performing arts and athletics sort of eliminate that for a second and third model.
Right.
And just have this is the fee per activity with a family cap, which I think is a little bit easier.
Right.
As well.
I, I, I agree with the concept. I agree. I think the number refined. I really just wanna look at what the family, what the cap is on each activity and what the universal cap is and how many we think that will hit that. Just so we can make some adjustments on that. That would be my, my suggestion for now. But I think, I'm, I'm generally in agreement with what the fees are. I just wanna look at the caps, in particular, the family cap and the universal cap.
Can you remind me what the athletics one was?
So the athletics, the current, the current, for example, current fee, first sport, four twenty-five. Second sport, three hundred. Third sport, three hundred. That was an increase that happened a year ago. It was four hundred, two hundred, two hundred. So we went four twenty-five, three hundred, three hundred. We kept the family cap at thirteen hundred. I think that did impact the amount of revenue that we ultimately would have received with the other per sport increases. And what we had recommended was just going to four fifty per activity with actually sixteen hundred family cap.
Yeah. It is. I mean, and I don't wanna open up a can of worms, but I wonder, do we care how much a sport actually costs? I mean, some sports cost more than others.
Yeah.
Like, if you're running cross country and you're not-
Yeah, I've-
I don't, I don't, I don't teach about different teams.
There are communities that do that. I, I've never recommended that model.
Yeah, yeah.
Press pension coach over here.
Yeah.
I don't know if I really wanna do it, but like, yeah, I just wonder like if it's a, again, like there's teams that have to rent ice, you know, and like have equipment and it's a very small team, so you get a little bit of user fee. And there's others that, you know, eighty kids running around a track and uniforms aren't as much.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I know, I, I think it kind of creates sports against each other and we look at it, this is the program, this is what we wanna offer, the, the opportunities for all students.
I think the same thing with arts, arts programs, too.
Yeah. Well, we look at, the reason I would argue, and I, I'm not saying we should do it, but the reason I'll bring it up is just because we put that chart up and again, I think we should have some of this chart ready to see before we make these decisions. But we put up like what percentage of is being paid by user fee versus the budget. But that, if you go down to the per sport level, it makes changes as well because the user fee pays a smaller percentage of some sports than it does other sports. You know, other sports, it might be paying more than a hundred percent of the fee, you know, for that sport. And so that's the only concern I have is if, if the user fee is paying more than a hundred percent of the actual cost of the program, I, I just don't know. Maybe it's fine, but like, it's just a thing I think we should think about again. And it might, it might be that none of them are paying more than a hundred percent of it anyways, but I just, yeah, just thinking about that part of it.
It's difficult to define that.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, we do have some data on that. We pulled it in a little bit.
Yeah, I don't think that's-
I think you quickly get equity issues too, right, to all the expensive sports and can people afford all those sports? I think that these are reasonable. I mean, you know, you think about, you know, my son's doing flag for the first time. That was three hundred dollars for eight weeks, right? So I mean, these are in line with what you're paying for youth sports in town and they're getting five days a week of practicing games, you know, during their seasons. I guess also just looking at this though, this will put a dent in their revolving accounts, but it's certainly not going to balance them. Like, it's going to help.
It's gonna help.
We're still going cost negative on, it would appear.
Yeah, athletics has the greatest ground to make up.
Right, yeah. But again, I mean, I'm not really arguing this business, but I can't not argue things.
It's what we love about it.
But again, like, flag football is three hundred dollars. Your other kid that's playing soccer didn't pay three hundred dollars.
It was like two seventy-five, so we'll call it stuff.
I thought it was like one, I thought it was like two hundred. But like, the, the point is, they're diff, they're slightly different, you know, based on the cost of field, field rentals and everything else.
Yeah, I'm disagreeing if you broke out something, like where you're renting ice time or, or pool time, it's gonna be completely-
Yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, the other, but the other challenge is to kind of come back to what we were talking about before. Some of this might be, some of those more expensive sports will be cut next year. That's the other part of it, you know? I mean, like, if it's taking more out of the budget, some of these sports are going to be the ones that are gonna be out of the cut line for next year because it does cost twenty thousand dollars to run a team or it costs whatever and that's what we're getting down to. And so, again, I think we should have all the discussions when we, when we raise fees. I agree that we probably don't, we can't completely change the model. I like the change we proposed before, which is just each sport is the same amount, you know? But I think before we make the final though, I would love to see the family caps for each one and the overall universal cap and then we can make it.
I think I'm the only one without a middle schooler, so I, just the, I understand the sports aspect, the fine arts. Is that like two hundred, two hundred, is, do you have like three seasons of fine arts? Like you have three seasons of sports?
They don't really overlap. It's kind of like sports, they don't-
Okay, so you get to pick like three, if you were doing three sports, you could do, do three fine arts things.
Usually there's three, they're not seasons the same way. There's a musical in the, in the fall.
Yeah.
There's a, a one-act play in the spring and then there's acapella.
Okay.
So acapella goes throughout the full year.
Yeah.
So you pay one time, you, you pay once for acapella, right? I think.
Yes.
Right. Maybe once for acapella. So the acapella goes all year.
Cause I know the sports are obviously a lot more expensive with traveling and fields and all this stuff, but everything in fine arts is using the fine arts at high school, right?
Right, well, then there's also-
Which I would argue we're all paying.
Are there any bands that are pay? I mean, like, band is not, are the jazz band, any of those pay ones?
Those are clubs. That's a class.
Jazz, jazz bands and class, all, so there's no band ones? It's just choral that are, that are extra?
It's percussion.
Yeah, percussion. So there, yeah, that's, I, I think there were, I thought there were some, so.
But you can, you can think of, of the light sports. They don't overlap. And if you wanna do more than one, it makes sense to kind of pay the same fee.
The sports cost more because you're going places in the field, but it's because we already have a performing art center. So it does seem like a thousand dollars and a sixteen hundred dollar cap, it, it seems like a big difference for families. When you're, if you're getting three seasons of, potentially three seasons of each, if you're looking at it that way.
And it's also, it's also days per spent per activity. So like an acapella, something like that is like once a week, whereas softball is four, five.
I mean, the only, the only other difference on that though is, we've talked about this in the finance subcommittee about, well, should the, should the user fees be more in line? The difference is if you're playing a sport, whether you're a starter or not, you are there every day for practice. If you're doing a show, like, again, I, I had two students in there. If you're doing a show, like, again, I, I had two students in there, one of them got a bigger role, he was there every single day, the other one went once or twice a week. So, to say that, to go once or twice a week, I mean, Mr. Southern brought this up in our meeting before, like, he was, his son was a stage crew, he went every other, like, what, what, what?
He was going every other, he was every other, they had so many kids, they had to split them in half.
Right, so like sometimes it would be, he'd be like, once a week, to pay the same amount as somebody who's going every day in any sport instruction for, you know, two months, is a little bit different to say like, whoa, you're gonna pay four hundred and fifty dollars to, you know, go and do the stage crew, you know, once a week for two months versus getting specific instruction on your sport every day for two months? Eh, again, there's differences of, of the two, I think, so.
Well, it's also, there are caps on the number of people that are gonna be on your soccer teams, whereas.
I think they don't make cuts actually, but you don't play, you just practice every day, basically.
Still, but there's a practical level to it.
No, I mean, there's gotta be. Yeah.
No, but I, they, they, I don't think they make cuts, most of the sports do not make cuts, they allow everything.
I guess where I'm going is, I guarantee you the number of people that are participating in, uh, the fall show eclipses the number of people on a single team, well, not necessarily.
Middle school, but not high school?
Yeah.
High school is much smaller, I heard. Yeah.
Just, just to make sure everyone's clear too, that this is a newer thing that we've introduced, there was no performing arts fee. We introduced it as a pilot five, six years ago maybe, um, so we're increasing that, but yeah, it's, it's very different. But for years it ran just as one of the clubs and activities, I believe, which they would just pay the general, cause there's another fee that they pay just to do clubs, chess club or art club.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, and so some of those activities ran that way, and then we introduced an additional performing arts fee. And that's allowed us to add more opportunities for kids, and so that's one way to do it. I just also wanna note for the viewers at home, every time Mr. Buckley speaks, it focuses on Lincoln, so I don't know if that's, uh,
Yeah.
It's supposed to be happening or.
But it's.
When I speak, I speak at the room, and when you speak, I, I like the smirk on your face when you throw that out too.
Now, I kept seeing, uh, a Lincoln.
I know, it's like, kinda.
It's like, somebody's speaking, it must be Lincoln.
It must be him.
I mean, I do think, but, back to kind of your embarrassing comment before, I mean, I kinda, I'm gonna make it here too, right? We're talking about increasing these fees, but I watch all the athletes and all people performing arts also going out and panhandling throughout town to go make up the remaining funds to be able to put these programs on, right? So that it doesn't stop here like that. These user fees are one step, but like, all these kids are out, they're selling advertising space, they're selling those restaurant cards, they're doing car walk, I mean, these kids are working to be able to do these activities well beyond what we're collecting. So I, you know, we talked about how much time, just to be able to put this on, I think I should go, if we noted as well, it's, it's, to me, we're out, we're putting a lot on these kids to be able to do the things they want.
Yeah.
The cost for athletics with the rentals, the referees, the buses, the transportation, there's just so much overhead.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's really increased these last few years. Athletic trainer and transportation, both of these, two good examples.
Yeah, no, it goes back to just the overall budget, and these aren't gonna go down.
Right, and the community, it's a lot of effort in trying to find the funding to, you know, make these pro- and these programs thrive. It's hard to argue against it, I mean, we've got.
Yeah, every student report.
We've got every, every athlete in every performing arts, I mean, we're, we're in na- on the national stage here, so if we're doing this, something right. But, um, it shouldn't just be noted that it doesn't stop at these fees, and these kids are going out and working for it well beyond this.
Absolutely.
Okay. We're gonna pass over.
So we'll bring something back to the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll pass over the actual,
Yeah.
voting of it for now. Okay, last new item is the food service contract, um, Mr. Connolly, you wanna lead us through this?
Yeah, um, so it was added this morning, so I didn't get it in on Friday, uh, last week, is, um, a highlight memorandum, kind of documenting the, the highlights of the new, uh, food service employee contract, that's kinda on the table for, for vote and discussion this evening. Um, but the North Carolina administration, in conjunction with, uh, Mr. Buckley, who took part in the negotiation process, has reached an agreement with the food service workers for a new three-year contract agreement, which would take us through fiscal years F twenty-six through fiscal year twenty-eight. Uh, we were, uh, recently informed that the food service employees met on Wednesday, April sixteenth, and they began a statement to accept the terms of the new contract. Um, the new contract is a, with the food service employees, is a three-year agreement, again, as I just referenced, from July one, twenty twenty-five, future thirty, twenty twenty-eight. The survey that includes an eight and a half percent cost of living increase over the term of the contract. That's a two and a half percent, um, in year one, three percent in year two, and three percent again in year three, as a cost of living adjustment. There were some other highlights, um, of the contract and some changes that I, I tried to summarize, some summarizing a few bullets. Um, we certainly clarified expectations on serve-safe certification requirements for new hires. Um, and we felt, the administration felt it was important that all new staff must be serve-safe certified, and that be part of sort of job descriptions and hiring postings moving forward. Um, and existing staff are now sort of responsible for managing their renewal certification process, as it's still our ultimate goal, that all staff in the district have that certification, um, cer- certification, excuse me. Uh, we also worked to clarify expectations regarding the use of district resources and the software that is available for communicating paid time off for sick and personal days to the administration. Um, so some language got updated and revised, consistent with other language that has been added in other contracts over the, the last, um, few, few years. Um, we also added some more restrictive attendance incentive payout eligibility requirements that again are consistent with recently added language in other contracts as well. Um, we also worked to clarify and enhance opportunities for floater compensation for staff that do, or, or are asked to go and cover absences when needed outside their primary school. So that was a particular, um, issue that we did talk about, um, with the negotiating team, we reached. We felt an agreement that doesn't really add a lot of additional cost, but it just adds more opportunities for staff to receive that, as opposed to just one or two staff members that are asked to go out and cover for absences. Um, so that was, that was some, in addition to some of the cost of living adjustments, those are some highlights of some of the changes. Um, certainly wanna thank Scott Buckley School Community Chair for his participation in assistance in the, in negotiating the contract with the food service team. Um, certainly a huge thank you to Morgan Soares, who did the majority of the work in this process as a human resources administrator in our office. She was very instrumental in this negotiation process, putting together all the paperwork, redlining the contract, doing a lot of the communication proposals back and forth with their team. So, um, certainly a huge thank you to Morgan Soares. And I do also wanna thank, um, the food service team members who participated and volunteered their time to sit with us in several afternoons after their workday to negotiate the new contract, and that was Wendy Burt, Sabrina Coverello, who was a hater, and then the absentee representative, T.J. Cooper. Um, we're all, I think it was a very kind of collaborative process, um, ethical process that we worked together to negotiate what we felt was a very fair, uh, contract. Uh, we did begin negotiations in February and reached an agreement, um, at the end of March, that was recently ratified and we're creating it um, before the school made publicly this evening. Um, so if that was open enough to any questions, then there is a recommended motion in the memorandum.
Great work, you know, all these contracts are difficult, uh, to work through, there's nothing easy about them, so great work.
Thank you, yeah.
And thank, thank you, Mr. Connolly, because you did, most of you and Morgan, you know, did most work on our side, and so I was along for the ride on your coattails, and it's a great place to ride, um, and, and, and just thank you to the food service workers, because eh, it's good when you have a good record, a, a good working relationship with a, with a union throughout the, you know, the prior three years. Um, you know, there were times that they proposed some things and we were very honest and said like, no, that's a structural change we're not willing to make, um, but, you know, we introduced some things that, you know, were other things that I think were more palatable, um. And so, it was a really open and honest discussion, and, you know, I think we got there pretty quickly, and a few different times we would go back and forth in the room and then separate, and it was a really good process, so thank you to them, and and we're happy to be part of the process. Okay, did we have a motion, did we make the motion to rec, to approve the food service workers' contract?
Uh, I move to approve the food, uh, service workers' contract. Uh, do you want to put a date in to that?
Yeah, I'm gonna read the whole one.
So I move that the school committee vote to approve the food, food service worker contract reached for fiscal year twenty-six through twenty-eight, as presented and recommended by the administration.
Second. Any discussion, all those in favor, I oppose unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Okay, which can matter, but we'll do these quick minutes, March tenth, twenty twenty-five, who wants to lead us?
Do it. Move to approve the, um, minutes from the March tenth of twenty twenty-five meeting, uh, our open session as written.
Second. You have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Uh, I think everybody is there, right, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
I oppose unanimous.
Um, move to approve the minutes from the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five executive session as written.
Second. You have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I oppose, abstent, in one abstention, passes four zero.
And then finally, move to approve the, um, minutes from the open session of the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second. You have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Uh, those in favor, I oppose, abstent, one abstention, passes four zero, thank you very much. Budget update, none at this time, we just did the budget, staffing.
No updates yet.
Yeah, right.
Staffing, Dr. Daley.
Just very quickly, we hired, uh, Ms. Tracy, uh, Kusikidian, uh, building substitute at the little school. Uh, Ms. Julia Shimada, as you met tonight, is a new principal, will start in July first. Um, at the high school, Maria Drogat Olvando is a, a long-term substitute, world language teacher. Um, in food services, Patricia Coughlin is a permanent substitute, and Abigail Murphy is the food service lead at the batch. And we've also parted ways with, um, Ms. Maria Busang, is, who's a paraprofessional at the hood school.
And just to reiterate, all those were substitutes except for one food service position that's been open, and a position for a principal that starts next fiscal year when the new, when the, when another person retires, so no new added staff positions.
Correct.
Um, bids and donations?
Sure, uh, we have one here, so I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars from the little school PTO to help fund the two hundred and eighty-two student tickets for an all-school field trip in May. Students paid, uh, ten dollars per ticket and the PTO paid twelve dollars per ticket.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? I oppose unanimous. Uh, no grants, Dr. Daley?
None at this time.
No overnight trip requests, we've already approved the Sonheim Awards, just now it's nice that they're going to see themselves get nominated. Uh, school committee social media discussion, our favorite part of the night, Mr. Sutherland. And this is, oh wait, let me just start with excellent job by both of you. Excellent job by both of you guys, whoever's posting everything.
Tim's.
It's good to get the information out there, um, you guys have done a tremendous job, so congrats.
Agreed.
Okay. After that.
Really? We're, we're, we're already involved with this now, Scott, we're cooking gas.
Yeah.
Look at that.
No, Tim's templates and information is great.
Great. Um, talk about what we want for tonight.
So, we cert- yeah, we certainly have, um, I mean, well, I'll, I'll start with one. Do we know, are we anywhere with getting, uh, Ms. Molly's impassioned speech? How can we get that video clip, the ninety-second?
From the hearing.
We can get that.
I think we would, if you guys would be open, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
If she's open to that, I think that would be a good, um.
I, I did mention it to her, she said, what did I say?
Well, she, she repeated it again to me, so she, I mean, she knew what she was doing. I guess the other thing I would offer.
Dr. McKay is a similar thing from tonight.
We both, so that's the thing, I mean, I think, and I don't know the best way to approach this, but if we can start to get some type of, the, the students that were in here a few weeks ago, if there is testimonials that anybody does, does wanna bring those, obviously move eyeballs. Um, certainly not gonna make anybody do anything, but if there are groups or, um, people that do wanna do that, that is, that absolutely loses a needle. So, if we started with something like, I mean, a couple of weeks ago, I think that would be good, but if, you know, if there's some way to kind of float that out there to the staff and students that, you know, on a volunteer basis, or something that they did, they did wanna produce, I think that would be something that we would certainly want to consider on a, on something that was topical of interest.
What would they have to, you're saying that they have to come here?
No, I'm saying they can afford something, I mean, they can afford a reel, a fifteen-second.
To send them to us.
Yeah, and then we could look at it, and or go through Dr. Daley, I mean, we could figure out whatever process. I mean, I would probably wanna go through the administration, uh, but if, if the administration approves it, I don't see why.
It could be correspondence, I guess.
We could share it as correspondence.
Right, right.
Okay, Melissa.
They could also do it online, like if they, if they speak.
Sure, yeah. I know, it gets a little interesting with students doing it, so we would have to work through what would be acceptable there.
I'd be careful that if we're, if we're bringing in things that are correspondence and selectively choosing what we want to air, we have to be careful about that, because we have to give equal airtime to those that we may not agree with for that sort of thing.
Any correspondence gets addressed in the meeting, what we decide to republish again is different.
True, but I.
But essentially, are we doing the same thing, like picking and choosing particular meeting that we find important?
We are, but there's a natural selection of, if it's in here, you've come in here to do it, but you are correct, we are still making, it's a decision. I'm just saying, i- if we're doing that, I'm, I'm fine with it, but we just need to be careful with where it's going and, and what could lead to, that's all I'm cautioning.
Yep.
I think we should have Scott's madness.
And he's not taking it anymore.
Speech.
Put it wherever you wanna put it.
Network speech.
I even paid for the license, I saw that in the background.
I was gonna say three things, the new principal, maybe just an announcement of the principal or whatever, something like that. Um, something about the Lazarus Project possibly, that was done in the hood school, and um, budget cuts, I would just update the numbers, seven point two. Um, and just be careful with the total cumulative number, so address, adjust that. We do use in the twenty-six number, that was off of level services, not staff, not current staffing, so just make sure it's set at the right way.
So, so what, so what is the correct number over two years?
I don't remember.
We'll, we'll get you.
We'll get there, it's like twelve, of level services, it's three point eight less than twenty-six, right, so like, about twenty-two or something. Something in that range, but.
And you're saying the three point eight is the position we wanted to add and.
There were, there were some positions we wanted to add to keep class sizes the same, so class sizes increased in a couple of schools this year, so again, you either do the big, the bigger number and just clarify it's for level services, um, or.
I, I think it's, to your point, that you've done a good job, I think, of reiterating several times tonight, Scott, I think it's important to know, these are the cuts.
Correct.
Right, I think it's easier for people to ref- to say, okay, thi- this is what we had, and we subtracted from that number, and if we start getting into what level services is, and people can start hand wave their, their way around the numbers.
Whatever.
Okay.
You just make sure whatever it is, it's an accurate number, so, um, but I think those are the three things that stood out to me was, you know, just again, introducing new principal, the Lazarus Project, and then updating the budget cuts.
The, the one thing we may wanna revisit as a committee, I think we should bring it back, if you're open to it, is talking about potential for the follow-on years, and probably dusting off that document that was presented last year, and talking about maybe these are the potential items that we look for next year. Um, to my point earlier, we know that we're going to be operating in the red going into the year, we know in fact, right? We know that, we know that the, the expenses are growing greater than the two, prop two and a half, we know that. So, we should start probably understanding what that list might look like, so we can start to communicate that.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, to, to that point though, I, I still think you're getting a lot of presence, cause it's getting shared on even larger communities. I think pointing out that middle school will not be offered as a class in the sixth and seventh grades anymore, um, and.
World, world language.
World language, sorry, and then, um, pointing that out, pointing out that French is gonna, is being phased out, so students, you know, aren't gonna be able to take that, I don't know if you've published those things, yeah? So, or, or some generally like world language cuts of whatever, at the middle school program.
Yeah. So could, yeah, could we get that updated slide?
Mm-hmm.
And also, just any gra- anything that you can translate, and you've done so good at this with the graphics, you know, like, we say seven, seven point two. Like, you know, you have to like the little people, flamethrowers, seven people, a little point two person, like, this is like physical. Just, I just think, the more you can hammer people over that.
And you're, you're doing a good job of balancing positive news and the concerns.
Definitely.
So I, I don't think it should need, eh, I don't think it should be just one way or the other, I think it needs to be both. So I think like Sonheim works, um, figure out when, when they get to put out whatever, maybe sharing that from whoever, whatever school official posts that, and then, you know, again, even like the notorious, you know, recognition.
The video of them playing in a.
Or something, just, yeah, just congratulations or whatever, I mean, like, tho- those are the things I think about.
Those are queued up and ready to go for after this meeting, so, yeah.
So. Good, well done again, yeah, just awesome, thank you guys.
You know, I don't know how you spend your time, I can't, I'm just impressed.
Let me sleep a little.
I know, but it's very impressive, because I know, I, I can see that that's not something that's quick, I mean, even though you have wonderful templates.
Well, it's not wonderful, yeah, that'll be a summer project, it'll be wonderful.
Okay, so can we update CIPC, Mr. S? Okay, so committee update, CIPC, Mr. Sutherland.
We didn't, we didn't have a meeting, did we?
I don't know.
In the tent, it says.
Okay.
What day?
In the tent.
That's a while ago.
So far.
Three weeks ago.
Oh, well, that was, yes, that was just, uh.
We had a meeting.
The race, race we need to go again to present to the select board.
Okay, the select board did approve the rankings, and would we have, do we have a report on what we're getting for the schools?
We are getting.
Mr. Connolly, or you wanna talk about what we're getting?
Yeah, so, um, through the capital plan, we, uh, the hood school roof restoration project, we've been on, is number one on the list. Has the highest priority between the middle school and the school side. So we have a report that that phase two of that project will be funded. Um, we're already on the way of like a one-end contract to, to contingent upon approval at town meeting.
Okay.
Because we didn't, we didn't wanna wait, like last year, we wanted to get that done over the summer.
Yeah.
So we are, we already have bid that project, um, and have made, uh, an award in a contract contingent upon appropriation at town meeting. So, um, that contractor can be, have the, have the crew ready for the summer. Um, so that project's gonna be funded, um, the bids came in within budget too. We might even be able to do like an alternate, a bid alternate to kinda add, add a little bit more, um, as well, so that's positive. And then the, the interactive boards, um, at the middle school phase two of that project is going to be funded as well, for two hundred thousand dollars to do, um, the middle school classrooms. The high school was done last summer. Uh, so that's, that's positive as well. And then, obviously, the, the only really other item that was on the table for schools for next year was the hood school bonds. And that's something that's, we have a SOI in with the MSBA, and we're probably gonna handle that outside of the capital process, maybe add a separate article at the fall town meeting. That's what conversations have taken.
Yeah, I think that's what we'll wanna dust off, as it does settle from town meeting, there seemed to be some confusion at select board as to what that project is and the cost of that project. So we're gonna wanna probably revisit that from our fall session and make sure that we raise levels up on what that project is and isn't.
Yep.
Um, because I, I mean, hearing wildly different things around town as to what this project is.
Were you talking about the hood, hood school?
Yes, yeah.
Model replacement?
Yeah.
Okay, can't find my fine arts, the finance planning team. Update, this is the updates, these are the updates, what we just brought on.
Good job, guys.
Yeah, you have fine arts here, okay, well, this Red Buff will lead us in fine arts, 'cause I don't worry, I'm fair.
Um, let's see, uh, we talked about the, um, the freshman course enrollment, um, that, um, and why, with me, you know, look at why it's so low. Um, only, um, you know, as the freshmen just start, you know, start to choose their classes, there's quite a low uptake of those taking fine arts versus business. Business is like a huge, huge, um, percentage higher, um, and just looking at that. Um, and let's see, um, oh, uh, Dr. Daly, maybe, um, we talked a little bit about the athletics and ex, uh, extracurricular position. Maybe you can speak a little bit to that, um, and what that looks like.
Yeah, we talked a little bit just about the, the position for athletic director and extracurricular activities, having some oversights of performing arts insofar as the pieces where they need to coordinate using, uh, buses, the collection of, um, some fees and some pieces, so a lot of it's administrative that will happen in that office. You know, I think ideally, you'd have another leader in performing arts or arts. Right now, I'm thinking if the athletic director can, can do some of those pieces, and also help us with some of our maintenance for, you know, adding new positions. We're just sort of having a point person, six twelve, to help with that, and so this is part of that administrative restructuring with the athletic director position that we talked about earlier.
Yeah, and I just, I think it's, it's, it's actually a very clever position in terms of, like, taking some of the administrative burden off of, like, you trying to communicate between the athletic and the, um, the, the theater and the music programs. Is this, is this like an inter, like, do we, do you know who you're gonna have fill this position, and like, is it a posted position or just?
So we're gonna be posting the position, we're probably gonna post, um, both the coordinator for digital learning to replace Dr. Downs, and the athletic director internal only. I think we do have candidates internal who would be excellent, and so, um, those will be posted very soon, um, and we'll be looking at that. So again, our teacher leaders, our curriculum leaders, and our teachers, and performing arts, um, extracurricular leaders are doing all this work. And so to have another person, I know in some ways it feels maybe like we're, we're not empowering them, but we, we actually were adding some support there, and so, you know, it's, it's, I know that the athletic director is gonna be concerned with sports and athletics, but there are also gonna be a person during the school day that can be a person that can, I can meet with to talk about things, sometimes when these other folks are in class, and so it's another administrator able to help. So the things that I've heard over the years at that fine arts, uh, subcommittee that are issues, that are ongoing issues, this is another administrator now who can focus on this during the school day to help us out.
And, um, I would think, you know, if you want a particular type of person who is, you know, maybe they're an athletic director at heart, but they have, they, they have the ability to take into account the importance of, like, the communication coming from the, the arts, um, departments.
Mr. Johnson's done a really nice job of always trying to think across the board, scheduling fields, scheduling practice time for band, for football, van availability. He's done a great job with that, now I'm thinking that it's actually a part of the job, and it's just embedded in there that this is an expectation. So, and, and I've discussed that with many people internally, and people understand, it's, it's a lot they're asking, but.
It's really the same role, but expanded responsibilities.
Expanding responsibility, and it's no longer, the person would not be teaching, so the person would be able to do some of these pieces as a part of their administrative.
Yeah, that's, nothing of that's really pressing.
Totally what I remember us.
We talked about the, uh, the grant, the ECD grant, and how that's playing out. So we've done a great job, we're gonna be presenting in June at the state level, um, for that work as well, so our teachers have done a tremendous job with that, kind of leading the state on that area, so.
Right. Um, before any other subcommittees, we're gonna have a reorganization, so we'll see who's on different things for next time, but I've been told by this Red Buff that she will kill all of us if she's not on fine art subcommittee, which is scheduled for May twenty-ninth at three fifteen PM. Athletics subcommittee scheduled for May twenty-first at twelve thirty. We did put a finance plan in here, but I don't remember.
May sixteenth?
May sixteenth, I did not write it down, so, um, and, yeah, administrative report, uh, Dr. Daly.
Just two quick items, I announced our hiring of a little school principal, I reinforced three times now.
Yeah.
And the, you know, I know it was shared earlier, I did get a chance to go to see Notorious on Broadway. Um, they easily were, were in the top groups, they didn't place in the top three, but they did win best arrangement, and they were just absolutely outstanding. So I do have some, um, cellphone video I could share, uh, I think it's okay that we're allowed to take, I know, I know during some of the other performances we weren't allowed to take because it was sort of, but I think the final.
Top secret, right?
Yeah, the final version, I think we can share, but they were, they were just absolutely outstanding, and to be able to have that experience of performing on Broadway is just unreal. So, so, so proud of them, and all that they do, and Ms. Kane and her, her dedication, so it was great to be able to see that.
And again, I mean, just to kinda, uh, uh, I mean, that they, and they pack those trips that make it work more, 'cause they went to three different Broadway shows when they were there. They went to a recording studio to record something, they, you know, they did like a flash mob outside somewhere, like, they, they pack, it's not just like they travel down and they do the thing and then they go back, like, they make everything a, a very.
I believe they watched the college championships, and they also, they do a nice hall, so all nine schools sort of do one number together too, so it's quite a show, quite a thing, so it's great.
That, that same thing was awesome too, like, in preparation for it, I was like.
Really great, they brought all the students together.
Even, even the, the middle school, I could tell, like, we have so much talent.
Okay, man, administrative, that was your administrative report, correspondence, none at this time. Future business, we have a meeting on May twelfth at the Bachelor School, uh, May nineteenth at the little school, June ninth, we have town meetings.
Two, one week apart.
One, one week apart, is that accurate?
I think they are, I think because Memorial Day weekend is the next weekend after that.
I, I, um, have a request, if it's possible, I'm not gonna be at the May twelfth meeting, um, if we do the reorg on the nineteenth, so I have to.
I'm also not.
Yeah, the reorg has to be within, I mean, according to policy, has to be within certain other days of the town election.
Oh, does it? Okay.
I may not be at the nineteenth, so.
Okay, well, then, um.
Doesn't have to be on Monday.
Although that's optimistic of you and I, no, so maybe.
I mean, you never know, um, so.
I think, I think we at least, I think we at least have to reorganize the main officers, I don't think we have to necessarily do all the subcommittee assignments right then.
Okay.
We could also.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe, maybe what we do is we at least get like a chair, a vice chair, and, you know, that, or legislative reps, something like that.
Nor is we missing anything I am interested in.
And then, so maybe we do something like that.
Right.
But then, maybe we don't do all the subcommittees until later, Dr. Daly?
And just as it, we could also schedule like a morning Zoom, just for reorganization purposes.
Would you be around to do a Zoom?
Me?
Yeah, either of you.
Um, no.
No.
Doesn't have to be that day, it could be, it could be any day after the election.
Um, hours of the country that we, not probably able to get, so, sorry. But I can do it any other time, I can do it right after town.
Or we just assign you the worst-case things, because you're not there, so.
Do we have, are the other members here? Jennifer's not able to be here, do we have three?
We have three for a quarter, at least, to do.
On the twelve.
Okay, so maybe we just don't do all the things.
Yeah.
Um, and June sixteenth, we have a meeting as well. Before we close, I'll just say, congra, good luck to the two candidates that are running, um, thank you, you know, it's a hard job, and so thank you for volunteering for every, every rollout there for, that's running, but, you know, for you two in particular to do it again after doing three years is commendable, so thank you guys for running. Dr. Daly?
Did you have public comment tonight?
I did, yes, yes, at the very beginning.
Yeah, at the very beginning.
It was the first thing, no?
No one.
I was up there, so I made it.
Yeah, we did, first, first thing, first agenda item. Um, okay, nothing else? Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
The motion we have a second, all those in favor?
I.
I oppose unanimously, thank you, everyone.